Book, yep.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah. I only like to watch the color. It's turning on like a back of a key. We're not used to that either. Double sided printing.
Ryan, will you be over here?
Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Planning Commission meeting. It is February 7th, 2002. See, well, not seeing up. We'd like to have a call to order and roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Here.
Mayor Bixson?
Here.
Commissioners Clark Martin?
Here.
Gasson?
Here.
King?
Here.
Lord?
Here.
Stone?
Here.
And Chairman McGee and Secretary Sager absent.
Thank you. We have a quorum. If you would please, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the republic's stand. Which stands in our honor, in our God, in the physical, in liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, Mr. Gasson, do you have a mask? Only because we've been asked to wear them for the meeting and I would...
It's on the front seat of my car.
That's okay. We've got one right here for a whole box. You can take two.
And I brought it to my car with the intention of wearing it.
Of course, and that's fine. Thank you very much. Keep the box.
Okay. I apologize.
No.
I don't mean to be offensive or rude.
There's no apology necessary. Thank you very much.
Register.
Thank you. Okay. Item number four, approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 6th, 2021. Any comments by the Commissioners?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, so move. Any second?
Support.
Okay, support by Councilperson Stone. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioners Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gasson?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Agenda item number five, public hearing to adopt the master plan. Nick, is this you or is this me?
Oh, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Oh, you can. Okay, good. That's what I was worried about. All right, good. Is Rowan in the room?
Yes, Nick.
Okay, Rowan, good job. All right. Sorry about all this disconnect. It's very frustrating for us. So, tonight, after, as our timetables allowed us to go through the master plan, our next step would be for the Planning Commission to get an update. Rowan did an awesome job with City Council last Monday. He's going to bring you up to date. We're not going to spend the time to go through the whole master plan because there were, this is after the 63-day period of comments. We've got a summary sheet that I believe was in your packet that Rowan will probably go over to highlight what came in and the next steps. And if you see fit with those additions, I know we had some additional information from the owners of the Hellro, talking about adding a PICA. I know we've had discussion about adding a PICA to the school board piece on university. That could take place tonight if the Commission considers it and that you have an agreement that that's what you'd like to do to amend the plan with those comments. You have the power to do that tonight after the public hearing. So Chairman would open the public hearing, see if there's any comments from anybody. If not, close it, then discussion from the Commission with the goal of approving the document as Rowan presents it to send to City Council for, I believe it's the 28th public hearing that they would have, and that's when the final adoption of the document would take place. At our special meeting in a couple of weeks, we're going to talk about the next details to go along with the zoning ordinance, the zoning map, and that's McKenna that's going to do that. So Rowan, if you would, Mr. Chairman, allow Rowan to make his presentation and we'll see where we go.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bennett. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah. Thank you all for having me here tonight. My name is Rowan Brady. I'm a planner at Beckett and Raider. Beckett and Raider was the consultant firm hired by the city to update the master plan that you have before you. Nick mentioned that there was a summary of changes or summary of discussions from Council included in your packet. I'm not going to go over every single item because a lot of them were just some grammatical or language changes, but I will go over the substantive changes from that meeting. Mayor, if there's anything that you feel like I missed that you want to bring up for discussion, please, please jump in.
Yeah, just a real quick question. And we had this issue in the council meeting, was the changes that we all made in our last meeting do not show up on here. Is that correct?
That's correct. We did that for a number of reasons. Number one being efficiency and cost. Those changes will be reflected into the document if approved go tonight. That will go to Council. The council meeting on the 28th will have a document that has all of the changes that have been discussed from the beginning of the 63-day review, and discussions here today will be reflected in the document that goes before Council.
And that was confusing to us on the council, so it could be confusing tonight, but the changes we made, if you look at it, didn't look like they changed, but they did.
Right.
So it's, so everybody knew that.
Great, thank you. So the first change I'd like to go over is in Chapter 3 on housing, on pages 25 and 28. You'll notice some maps. I'll give you a minute to get to that page.
Oh, God, I tore this thing apart.
Can you put it on the board?
Um, I don't know if I have the... Nick, do you have it up to share on the screen?
Is it in the packet?
It should be. You know, this report symbol... Yeah, it's, I believe that it is in the packet.
Okay, someone just wants to tell me what page.
What page is it?
It's page 25 of the master plan, page 47 in your packet.
So is that the acknowledgement page?
No, it's page 25 in the corner here, Mr. Stone. And then, so it would be 47 at the very bottom.
Yeah, it's 25. I have a second one.
25-47.
Correct.
Yeah, there you go. All right. Just checking.
Here you go.
Okay.
Okay, so these maps show outdated demographic data. They were pulled over from the previous master plan. Those maps are going to be updated with recent figures reflecting the 2019 census information. Moving on, in Chapter 5, there is a substantial section in Chapter 5 about parking recommendations. That section is going to be updated to reflect recent council action on parking, including meters and...
Can you give us a page number, please?
Oh, um, yes. I believe it starts on page... A moment. Parking discussion begins on page 60 of the master, or excuse me, 61 of the master plan.
What page in our packet?
And that would be page 83 in your packet.
So this section will be updated with recent council action on parking, including meters and...
Mr. Chairman, correction. That doesn't correspond to my packet.
That's, 61 is piping capacity issues.
Oh, you might need to look a few pages afterwards as well.
Okay. Parking would be page 65 and the master plan, page 87 in your packet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah, the master plan.
So this section will be updated with recent council action on parking, including meters and other dollar figures. And then additionally, at the end of this chapter, so on page, I believe, 69, there is a blue box with planning implications. Specific dollar amounts from this section will be adjusted to reflect recent council action or removed.
Which one?
On page, the specific figure number?
Specific figure number...
Page 90.
Oh, right here. I got it.
Page 91.
Yep, I got it.
And that just showed we looked at all those, but all we did was the one change. City Council changed it.
All right. And then moving into the end of Chapter 6, again, moving into the planning implications box at the end of the chapter, which I believe should be...
Page 98.
76.
Thank you.
76 on the...
Master plan.
In this section, there is an action item that says work with the city of Rochester Hills to share equipment to save cost of maintenance. This will be brought into regional partners, so broadening that action item beyond the city of Rochester Hills. And then additionally, the action item that states, breakup impervious surface with vegetative, breakup impervious surface with landscaping, we will also add, or other stormwatering engineering solutions to the end of that action item, broadening that recommendation beyond vegetation.
That's in the planning implication policies?
Correct. The first action, under zoning.
Under zoning, okay. So you're adding stormwater?
We'll add stormwater engineering solutions to the end of that.
Yep.
And then in Chapter 7, there is a large box, historic preservation. It takes a full page spread. Mayor, our vice chair, would you be able to provide that page number?
Let's see.
Right there on your left. Yep.
So it would be page 85, number 107 in your book.
These recommendations come from the Secretary of the Interior. You'll notice that a bunch of these statements have the phrase "shall." Because these are recommendations from the Department of Interior, we're going to change that verbage to be "should," loosening that language a little bit. And we will also add a discussion of the Harrison Building to this section right after this page, and why historic preservation is important at that site. Then finally, Chapter 9, future land use, intensity and design plan. We want to take a moment to look at the future land use map, which should be near the end of that section.
So, well, let's see.
Give a moment to flip to that page.
Future land use?
Should be, it should be a map.
Yeah.
That's what we should look at. Yep.
This would be, Mr. Chair, it's Nick. This would be a good time to look at that map. I think it's 126, Brian. And then, yep, is that it? Yeah. So then if you, you can zoom in a little teeny bit. There you go. Good job, Brian. Brian's good and applied. This is where Hellro had brought in a discussion, and most of the planning commissioners will remember that whole discussion when they were trying to rehab their property. They have a very dirty site. It was financially extremely difficult to make it work as a single-family home, one or two, if they could even get two homes out of that. They had looked for that to be established as a potential intensity change area on that property, which would allow the City Council and Planning Commission to consider alternate uses down the line. Doesn't give them the right, but it gives them the opportunity. And then second, the Harrison Building that Rowan just talked about, on University, the admin building, that was never a PICA to start with, but if either the Planning Commission or when it gets to City Council, you all would like to make that a potential change district. Also, it's zone R1, single-family residential right now, and it only allows for that. So if you look at the map, that's where you could identify those two sites. And if you want to make a recommendation for those two, one, none, that is up to this body to make your recommendation to City Council when they have their hearing, like I said, on the 28th.
Just to be clear, for reference purposes, we're looking at the map on page 99 of the master plan and 121 in your handout.
Should we just be discussing this once we open up?
I think so, yeah. We'll wait to do that until you're done with yours, sir.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So there were several changes from Council on this map. Notably, the Ice Ring property, which is on the southeast corner of the city along Park Yale Avenue, that will be changed from multifamily mixed residential to commercial. And then McGregor Elementary, which is on the southwest side of the city, will be changed to public, quasi-public. The Oakland County also had several comments about changes on this future land use map. Council was in support of all of those recommendations. And then lastly, in the appendix, we will be adding the non-binding resolution from Council about the Harrison Building as appendix item, I believe, D. And then we will be adding a tree canopy report that Council provided as an agenda item, or excuse me, appendix item E. That is the summary of changes from Council. Again, there were several others that were more language-based that you do have in your packet that you can review as well, but those are the substantial changes from Council.
Okay.
What's...
Yes.
What's the Harrison Building?
That's the school, I'm sorry.
That's the admin building?
That's the school building. It is, I don't know why it's called the, I know why. I mean, it's called the Harrison Building. So that's, that's what...
It's the one on Wilcox University?
Yeah, that's the one that's...
The one that was sold, or is to be sold.
It's in the process of that.
Yes, okay.
That's with all the issues going on.
Right.
Got it.
Okay.
And then the tree, the tree committee, they wanted to, we're at 30%, and the average is 40%.
Yeah, we're at the 40.
But we wanted to say that for a urban city like ours, 30% is actually extremely good. So they just wanted to clarify, clarify that.
Yes. SEMCOG's region-wide goal is 40%. SEMCOG is a seven-county region, which has a lot of rural communities in it as well, so 30% is a good mark for an urban community like the city of Rochester.
Commissioner Clark Martin, you had asked a question prior, and I give you an opportunity if you want to ask it now, to be clear.
Which one? About the PICA?
That and the tiny home issue?
Oh, yeah, the tiny home issue. I had thought we had removed that. I got a little bit...
There we go.
Just confirm?
Yep. It has been marked for removal.
Okay.
And then special projects.
Right, and we'll get to that in just a second, I think. But any other comments from the Commissioners before we open up for public comment? Okay. All right, so with that being said, I'd like to open this up for public comment. If there's anyone here who would like to comment on this, please step up to the lectern and state your name and address, please.
Let me see. This one?
Yes, sir.
Good evening and thank you for letting me address, oh, a little closer. Good evening and thank you for letting me address the Planning Commission. I'm Jeff Russell. I'm a member in Albertson LLC. We own the property at 322 and 326 Albertson. And if you think about it, where the Dairy Queen is, if you take that road all the way back to where it just kind of veers around the park there, that's our property. We've been there for several years. So there are several letters included in the packet, and I hope you guys got a chance to look at them. But do something a little different tonight. I'd like to tell you a story. So the story of our property begins in 1950s and 1970s. And during the 50s and the 70s, most of the homes and businesses in this area were heated with fuel oil. And that fuel oil came from Standard Oil, most of it, anywhere from Fogler Farm all the way down to the Ferry Sea Farm, came from our property. So Standard Oil owned it from the 50s on up until 76. They installed six 15,000-gallon overhead fuel tanks that held basically fuel oil for your heating your home. They transferred it off the train tracks that were in active tracks in those days. And during that process, in the 50s and 60s, if you spilled a gallon here, 10 gallons there, nobody really cared. Well, times changed. So that's the, by the way, Standard Oil's the villain in this story. That's the villain. So after that, in 1976, the first white knight arrives, and that was Frank Regold Senior. And Frank built his very first facility in the city of Rochester on our site. They occupied it from 76 until 79, when a tool company, Dresser Tool, bought it, and they manufactured tooling. We bought it from Dresser Tool in 1997 and did a background check and realized that Standard Oil had polluted the property. So we did a BEA, and the first phase and a, just a simple second phase to make sure we did some analysis, and sure enough, there's fuel oil in the ground. So that protected us going down in the future. We moved our manufacturing company, our sister company, Hellro Corporation, in, and we've been operating there ever since. Still are operating, actually. Over those years, we saw the neighborhood change, and beautiful homes were being built all around us, so we thought, you know what? We're zoned R1. That was zoned in 1990 from industrial originally. Let's see if we can build homes on this. So we spent about $30,000 and brought in an environmental and engineering team, did an extensive phase two, which, as they literally say, it's virtually impossible to remediate that property to residential R1 closure, which is kind of disappointing because we were looking forward to, you know, riding off into the sunset and having two beautiful homes in it. That not being possible, we then started to look for commercial properties, who could then maybe come in and become less seeds. That didn't exactly work out. We had two tenants come before this body, and withdrew before the body took action. So in 2018, we met with Lane Wing and the staff and discussed the possibilities of what we need to do to enable the property to be developed in something other than manufacturing in the future. Manager Wing made the comment in the meeting that he felt it should be added to a PICA. We said, that sounds great. 2019 rolls up, and then that plan review basically went by the wayside, which brings us to today. So today, we're at, we, I just want to give you a quick bullet points. Turn my page real quick. I'm not a great storyteller. So for 70 continuous years, there's been manufacturing going on at that site, which goes back, obviously, a long way. We've been there for almost 30. In the last year, we found a manufacturing company to come in and lease part of the building. So Hellro Corporation only occupies a portion of it now. Now we have a robotics company called XPS, great young company. They do robots, they're high-tech, super partner, great tenant, great use for the building. So I talked this over with them, and they're interested in continuing to do manufacturing into the next decade and a half at least. So our ask would be, because we're only 3, we're 500 feet from what used to be the PICA zone, but that is in the previous map, I didn't get a chance to review this map, I apologize. So our thought is, we'd love to just go back to the industrial. I don't know if that's ever possible, but that has to be a PICA before we can even have that discussion. So what we're asking tonight is if you would please consider including this very unique, very difficult, but very fine property as a PICA. We've done a great job landscaping it three times over the years. We've doubled the size of the Butterfly Garden over the last two years. And I think we're pretty good neighbors, and we really enjoy operating the facility there. But for the sake of developing the future, we feel it's really important that, you know, we get included into some sort of a PICA, to have the opportunity for a more creative solution down the road.
Sure.
Any questions?
I'll open it up to any questions to Mr. Russell. Chairman Gasson?
So I understand the story. It was a good story, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
So I got a good snapshot about the history of it. And I'm wondering, from where you are now, district-wise, to a PICA, that leap versus something in between more specific, which is a designated district?
Okay.
And which you stated, you think maybe an industrial use would be appropriate. Why not something more specific to that than open to PICA?
No, absolutely. I, our current tenant and my tenant, Hellro Corporation, would be open to, you know, rezoning it as light industrial, because that's what we do and that's what we have done. If for some other, some reason I ride off in the sunset in 15 years and somebody wants to develop that into something that's attractive to the trail with offices on the bottom and, you know, more density on top, then they'll be back before you guys to have that discussion. But I don't know, I'm not familiar enough with the process to know what might be the right steps, Commissioner Gasson. But yeah, we'd be open especially to rezoning it to light industrial, because that's what we plan to keep doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I have just to just a comment.
Any other questions?
That seems...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have any...
It seems reasonable, based on knowing that you have attempted many things.
Yeah.
And I just haven't seen that. I see more of a, I want to do this, therefore the district should be this, and ask for rezoning.
Right.
I haven't seen the, I want a wild card kind of approach. And I put that kind of cavalier, right?
Yeah.
But that's a little bit of the perception.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. That's a good point.
Any other questions? I've got one. You said you were 500 feet away currently from the existing PICA?
Yeah, well, what was the PICA?
Okay.
The, I looked at the, at the previous future use map. I had a little trouble finding the, this plan on the website, and so I was looking at an incorrect map. At that time, the old PICA came down the trail to within the two residential, there's two residential lots on the trail between that property and my property on trail.
Right.
I think currently, those two lots in the future plan, the correct future use plan are viewed as two family at this point.
Okay.
That's my neighbor's place.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other further questions? All set? All right. Mr. Russell, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Want to add something?
Yeah, just wanted to...
This is Kim Russell, one of the other members of the corporation.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Mayor and Commission. So what, you did a great job on the story, but I just want to make sure that you understand that there's two properties. So they're zero-based, you know, they butt up to, so there's, so it's 326 and 322 Albertson. So it's not just one piece of property, but there are actually two. There's one like a triangle, and there's one, it's like a rectangle part of it, but those are the two addresses. And the other thing, just on the Planning Commission in general, I think one of the things that we talked about on Council, I'm going to say this was three or four years ago, Mayor, about identifying not just the tree canopy, but also non-conformity properties. I don't know what kind of work has been done on that, but I'd love to see that just as a general comment in the future.
Sure. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Russell.
You're welcome.
Is there any further public comment as it pertains to the master plan review? No? Okay. So at this point, I would close the public comment and open up the Commissioners for any comments that you might have, whether it be with respect to what we discussed, whether it was presented by Mr. and Mrs. Russell, or if we want to take into consideration and have a discussion about the Harrison Building as well. So I will open it up, and Commissioner Lord, go right ahead.
I guess I have a question, maybe for Vidya or for Nick, but regarding this Albertson property, you know, we're talking about potentially a PICA on this property, but that's, am I correct that the PICA is really the zoning, not the future land use in the master plan? Am I, because when I'm looking at the future...
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Billy, if you want to go ahead?
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioner Lord. The PICA is actually an overlay district. It has got an underlying zoning. However, the PICA is an overlay boundary that gives the Planning Commission and the City Council the ability to deviate from all of the stipulations of the underlying zoning district itself. It just provides more flexibility. It's not a zoning by itself, it's an overlay.
But is that part of the master plan or the zoning ordinance?
A PICA is typically shown in the master plan, and we have looked at the master plan in order to guide us in zoning.
Okay, so that's, so the PICA designation is somewhere in this master plan. Okay, so that's, so the PICA designation is somewhere in this master plan, I must have just missed it. Is that correct? So when we're talking about updating the master plan and this property specifically, if we, are we saying that we want to extend that boundary to incorporate that property because it's not currently?
That's what it sounds like. I don't know, I haven't examined the future land use plan map in detail. If, uh, the PICA should be referenced in the master plan and it is connected to the zoning ordinance through special projects, which is referenced specifically in the zoning ordinance. So the special projects requirement in the zoning ordinance ties it to the PICA in the master plan. So the master plan that is before you done by Beckett and Raider should have PICA's reference in it or a PICA boundary line shown somewhere.
And, and the confusion, like the mayor said, is that was taken out originally by the planning commission and then when it got back through the process, we all wanted the PICA's back in. They're not, you don't have that, it's on the future land use map, so we would then add that boundary to the future land use map and then follows the progression that Vidya just outlined. So that's why you don't see it in there, because it was originally taken out by you guys and then, and requested to be put back in by you guys, so, um, a moving target. So we expect PICA to survive this new master plan.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner Lord?
I guess not. I guess, I, I just, so what we're talking about is, the request is to update the future land use map to incorporate this specific, these two properties to be in the PICA overlay.
That is my understanding as well. Is that correct, Nick?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Uh, let me go to Commissioner Gadsden for just a second and I'll get you, Mr. Commissioner.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Lord's question, the master plan won't change the zoning districts. It will just make a suggestion on land use for that district possibly in the future.
That is my understanding, but let's ask this gentleman here.
Yeah, so the future land use map, the end of the implementation section is a recommendation for how zoning should change in the future. When you adopt a master plan, it does not change zoning, you have to do that separately. So any amendments to the zoning ordinance or the zoning map will have to go through normal channels and eventually be adopted by council.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. One, one more question if I may...
Please, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman. When we changed from what was called special projects to PICA and then we either refined what was previously special project overlay districts to PICA districts, what was the rationale for that move? Because I think we, in that refinement, added some, I'll call it land area, to that designation. What was the reasoning that, that, um, through the planner possibly that we did that?
So Commissioner Gadsden, your question is, why did we change the reference from, uh, special project boundaries to a PICA in the 2014 master plan?
That, that's part, part A. Part B is, um, what was the rationale for the added land area to that district? I mean, under what criteria, like we're being maybe asked tonight, why would we change a, a, a zoned property to a PICA like we did some five years ago when we did it then? What was the reasoning then and would that same reason apply to what we're being asked to consider tonight?
Yes. So the term PICA essentially stands for potential intensity change area. And the reason the PICA boundaries or the special projects boundaries was expanded in 2014 to include more parcels was to identify land within the city that does face challenges, that has, that if developed under the present zoning, will not essentially add anything to the city of Rochester by itself and that possibly cannot be developed under the current restrictions. For instance, let me just, I'm just pulling out a random property, that's on tonight's agenda, the cement batch plant site. Now that site is zoned industrial. If you were to develop it strictly under the current zoning, it can be developed only for a limited set of industrial uses and our zoning ordinance standards for industrial properties are not exceptional. We, we barely have any requirements for any landscaping, architecture, or any improvements. The fact that we expanded the PICA boundary to pick up properties like that gives the planning commission and the city council the ability to now consider projects that you otherwise couldn't have looked at under an industrial designation. And under the umbrella of PICA, you can also get the site improved to so much more than what it can be under the straight zoning. Basically, PICA's are nothing but a different form of planned unit developments, but a tool that is not as tedious as a PUD. I have reviewed several PUDs, PUDs have agreements and they can be very challenging in execution. Uh, special projects is actually a modified type of PUD tool that has worked wonderfully for Rochester. So that was the reason for expanding the PICA and the special project boundaries for properties that we considered as being challenged and that potentially can be put to better use than what the underlying zoning was at in 2014 and possibly even now.
Sir?
Just a follow-up and maybe it's not so specific to what was done in 2014, but if I could extract maybe what I thought that meant was, the challenge wasn't, or any PICA isn't the challenge of its underlying zoning district, because you could always just change the district. The challenge is maybe coupled with physical characteristics and other inherent things to the property, not the district itself. Like the cement plant is industrial, we could have changed that to R1. Or something else, maybe R1 because of hazardous issues not, but it could have been something else besides a PICA, but you're saying, if I get it, I understand right, PICA considered the physical challenges and characteristics of the site, not just what was the zoning district.
Yes. I think you summarized it very well, because if you simply change it to another zoning district designation, you're once again tying yourself to a limited set of uses that at that snapshot in time you think will be the best fit for the property. But under a PICA umbrella, you not only would consider the challenges of the property, maybe the physical limitations, the development limitations, and any other criteria that overpassing of time come into light, maybe availability of utilities or infrastructure, all those would also play into it. So instead of rezoning it simply to one, another zoning designation, which property might not necessarily be developable, say for example, the same cement batch plant site, we had decided it's good for residential and we had rezoned it to R1. And then we encountered a proper problem where it is a brownfield site and hence trying to get a residential, um, clearance certificate for the property is near impossible, but now you're stuck with another zoning designation that doesn't work. The fact that we have a PICA boundary actually would allow the planning commission now to see if maybe a mixed use is a better idea than just residential, just to throw out an example like that. But you summarized it very well. Instead of having just rezoning it to another zoning designation, PICA gives more flexibility than just that.
And if I could just underline what I think my point is, is it's not the limitation of a district, it's the potential limitations and challenges of the site itself, the physical characteristics. Not any, you pick any district, they have challenges if you want to put a grocery store on a residential site, there's a big challenge, right? But if you have no parking, I mean, there's other physical things that would present the challenge, not just the district. And I think that's an issue, especially since what we're talking about tonight. There's challenges to the site, not whatever the district might be. Sorry if I believe the point too much, Mr. Chairman, but I, I just wanted to refresh myself on how we've...
Thank you.
...traveled through...
No, I, it's, it's very well. Commissioner King, you had a question?
I was just going to ask, do we have a, a map of the existing PICA locations, borders?
They would be located in the 2014 master plan and those exact PICA designations are going to be reflected on the, the future land use plan in this master plan.
It will be, okay.
Okay.
Or in any changes, you know, there's a discussion of properties to be added, any discussions to be added or removed would also be reflected.
And then this kind of goes to the question, um, Mr. Russell had about the non-conforming properties. There's another one that is just around the corner from there, the school. Do we, um, I'm noticing like properties like that, there's also multifamily on, you know, Woodward right there and the, and the single family. Are we identifying properties like that and determining if they should stay, you know, as is or have some sort of zoning recommendations?
I could help with that, Mr. Chairman, it's Nick. Um, that, that's a totally reasonable request, but it was not in the scope of work there. Two-thirds of this town is non-conforming. So, um, it was not identified to put that, have that investigation done and put it on these maps. It was a cost thing, to be honest with you, so it's not a bad idea, it's just was cost prohibitive.
I will add that staff and Beckett and Raider did review future land use maps and identified properties currently in transition and made those changes on the future land use map. But as Nick said, there's a lot of non-conforming properties, um, making that would be an uphill battle on the future land use plan and is probably something that needs to take place over a decade or so.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lord?
If the planning commission would like to see the 2014 future land use plan map on your screen with the PICA boundary shown, I can share it if I am given, uh, sharing abilities on Zoom.
I can make you co-host.
I think that would be helpful.
Yes, would you kindly? Okay. If you would just make me co-host, I would share it on my screen.
All right, you're all set, Vidya.
Okay, thank you. Okay, here goes. Can everybody see my screen?
Just needs to be zoomed in.
Okay, now I'm zooming in and this dashed line that you see on the screen, these are all the PICA boundaries in the 2014 master plan. Anything that is within this, um, dashed line shown in the legend, that would be your PICA boundary. I'll zoom in a little bit more, so... There you go. This was the 2014 master plan's future land use plan map, with the core downtown and the downtown edge district one, downtown edge district two. This was the transition district, these were office, this was mixed residential, this was rivers edge, this was the office technology research, this is light industrial manufacturing office service district, uh, and this once again was, uh, mixed use, various pink and this cross-designation by different types of mixed use districts.
Is it possible you could point out, or Jeff could point out where our five hundred feet are from our property that we're talking about on Albertson?
The Albertson property, I believe, is this, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Russell? Is that the Albertson property?
That little blue box up there?
That's pretty close, yep.
Yes. Yes. So where my cursor is, that would be the Albertson property right here and the PICA boundary stops right here.
That PICA's, just for the record, that PICA's got nothing to do with the other side of Albertson. That was Dairy Queen, that was the old grocery store. Five hundred feet, I appreciate the comment, but it's got nothing to do with that property. That's, there's a reason there was a PICA off of Main Street to that giant development. They were financially absolute property, so, just for the record.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner...
Just a quick follow-up on that. So with the PICA boundary being, being an overlay, uh, do we still need to have a future land use designation for the property? I mean, I would assume we do, because it's just an overlay. So right now, the, the, so the future land use for these two parcels is residential, is that right? That's the current zoning, is that the future land use too?
It is.
Okay. So, so was it really, you know, is the discussion for the master plan not only bringing this into the PICA boundary, but also looking at appropriate future land use designation?
Yes, that's a, that's a thing you should be doing, doing right now, right? Yes, so the future land use map will inform zoning amendments in the future, so designations on the future land use map will eventually become changes to the zoning map.
Well, it makes sense to me that, you know, residential doesn't make sense for this property anymore, so, um, and having some flexibility to it makes some sense, so I can understand the benefit of the PICA there. I guess it's just a matter of, uh, discussing appropriate future land use designation for the, for the parcels.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Stone?
So when will you have all of the changes picked up into the future land use map and will we see this again or is it just get broad-stroked and pushed to council and stamped and move on?
So tonight you have a couple options. You can approve the document with changes discussed here and changes discussed at the council meeting last week. You can approve based on those changes, so approval contingent on those changes being made. You can ask for those changes to be made and then adopt the plan at a later date. It's going to push the timetable a little bit longer. You know, council is targeting the 28th meeting for adoption and then, um, you would approve plan to go to council at a later point in time, so those are your two main options there. The document that will go before council will have all of the changes reflected.
And is council pushing for the 28th because we would be in some sort of schedule violation of something or is that just an arbitrary day?
As we say, there's no planning police, so there's no, no like term timetable. I, I will defer to Nick on, or Nick or Mayor Bixson on why the 28th was selected as a date council is targeting.
If I may, I do recall there was some time period that we were obligated to comport with. It was sixty days, I believe.
Sixty-three day review.
Yeah, so, so the master plan has to go for public review for sixty-three days. That period has now closed, but there is no timeline for adoption.
Okay, all right, that's why I want to be clear. Okay?
All right, so, so I would just say...
Mayor?
The idea is to do it on the 28th, but it doesn't have to.
Okay.
So I mean, if, if this body wants to look, you know, I think, I think administration would just like to do it just to move it along.
I, I get that.
But there's not some...
Personally, I'd like to see with my own eyes, whatever changes have been made before I say yes. So that's my own opinion. I understand people want to just move on and put this to bed, but...
No, and I agree.
I'm not good with a yes tonight, personally.
Sure.
Can we see it electronically? Or do we need...
Is that something that you could share with us, so you didn't have to produce the copies again and, and send them out?
Yeah, we wouldn't need to print the document. You would just have to hold another planning commission meeting to adopt that as well. So you could do it on your next agenda and have all of the changes reflected in the document for approval at that meeting.
Okay.
Will that be by the 17th or how soon can you guys get, don't we have a planning commission meeting this month, another one?
Do we have one at the end of February?
I believe so.
We have one on the 17th, I believe, just to talk about with McKenna, the zoning ordinance and moving forward. You could do it if, I, I'm not going to speak for Ron, if they can get all that done by then. If not, you do it on the March meeting and gets pushed.
That's ten days. I mean, I don't want to, you to overpromise and underdeliver, you know what I'm saying?
I would be comfortable, um, having it not on the 17th, just to give us enough time to make those changes reflected and for us to coordinate with staff as well.
That's fair. Okay. Commissioner Gadsden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with, uh, Commissioner Stone that I'd like to see it digital at least before I ask to say yea or nay.
Okay.
And then just back to Commissioner Lord's comments, um, I'm, and it's really about this, um, Albertson property. I'm, I'm, I see the, the wisdom in making it a PICA in that its challenges and its issues and not only with the site, but the issues it, it challenges it's had in trying to be something in, over the last several years and it's just not quite been able to get there. And I think that would open some doors and maybe bring some more creative ideas to us because right now maybe the property's been pushed into a small box with what it can be in its current zoning and limitations. So I think that would, would be all served well if it were a PICA. I would leave it with the underlining our district because to me, the property is optimally that, but challenged to be that, but I think I wouldn't change that. I think our message about future land use should say this is residential. Even if it winds up being something different and better than it is now. Not saying that it's bad now, because I think it, it's a good neighbor to where, to, to the place, but I wouldn't change the, and I'm not trying to be contradictory, but I think leaving it optimally what we, I think it should be is probably a better way and then just do the overlay.
Yeah, my only concern with that would be as if leaving a residential designation to it somehow limits the flexibility to it. You know, for example, if, if, if a master plan said residential and you wanted to rezone that property to industrial, well, you're no longer in line with that master plan. So it could, it could potentially, uh, cause some challenges, so...
I, I'm not sure how that works, but it sounds like that would be a challenge. But if it's overlaid with that flexibility, the underlying thing really doesn't matter. It's just, the underlying thing is stating to the outside world, this is what we think it should be. Whether it can be or can't, bring us your best idea is what the PICA allows.
Yeah, as long, I, I'm, I can support that as long as that's, you know, a, a true statement. And I agree that this property really wants to be residential. You know, it really does, it's just, it, it can't.
That's a question, Mr. Russell, go ahead.
I can't tell you. I don't know what cleanup things are in the future.
Well, maybe look at Vidya's recommendation.
So I've got a couple of questions for you.
Yes, absolutely.
So I went through the packet and I read the letter from Lake Shore Environmental, I believe it was. And they had said, I think the words were, it was virtually impossible to remediate that. Was it virtually impossible from a functionality, like they just can't do it, or is it cost prohibited, or is it both?
It's, it's actually both, but it's, it's, it's virtually impossible to get a general residential closure. Um, the, the, the oil is, uh, in the, uh, in the water table as well as in the soil and it, it really, it, it cannot be completely removed and closed to residential closure. And that's the problem with the property, it, it really can never be residential. You could do a passive vapor system on a, on a, on a parking lot in a commercial development down the road. It's acceptable for use as industrial as it is now.
It's acceptable for use as industrial as it is now, based on the, the, where the site and where the plume is. Yeah, that's an excellent question. It's, it's virtually impossible to get to R one. And, and over the last three years, I don't think Eagle has made it any easier to get residential closure, frankly.
They've not relaxed the standards.
No, they haven't.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for the applicant? Or, or Mrs. Russell?
Thanks.
I think Commissioner Lord maybe has a point, because what happens is you, when you make it at R one, you, the neighbors feel like it's a promise or it's something that can be that we really can't produce. And so I think that's our biggest obstacle, because you were saying something that we really want. It's just like, I wish I had island and I owned it, but I can't. And I think we're doing a disservice to the residents in that, in that neighborhood when we leave it how it is, when we know. Because we try, we spent a lot of money trying, and it just can't happen. I just think it's a disservice to the people around them.
No, and that's why I'd asked about cost and practicality and, and just whether it's even possible to do, so that's all. Commissioner King, go ahead.
I was just going to say I agree with that, because every time I'm in that neighborhood and every time it comes, you know, with an idea of what would go in there, it's not received well by the neighborhood at all. There's, there's no, like, ability to think beyond it just becoming single family.
Right.
And I think at one point there might have been like a building sign advertising single families, so that gave the idea that this was coming.
We tried.
That was my turn.
Yes. So I, so I do agree with that.
Shot us in the foot.
Yes.
Well, didn't you just, but we know we're dealing with.
Brought you here, right. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate hearing those other perspectives.
Okay. And, and, you know, while we're on the subject of Picas and on properties that are at issue, is there any traction or any appetite on the council to consider the Harrison Building property as a PICA or a special project district? Is there any, you know, any interest in that? Because I understand that is certainly a property that has lots of, lots of eyes on it right now, and it's designated what, R one, is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Correct.
Yeah, so, I don't know. Yes, Mr. Gass.
If you're asking for opinions, I would offer mine.
Please.
On the surface, based on what I try to define in my own mind is why do we do that? The physical characteristics, the limitations, I don't see that for this property. It has some uniqueness in it that there's a building there, and that building has some historical importance to some people. Maybe the community at large, which I could agree with. But I think that's not a reason to open the flexibility from R one. I think there's a combination of districts that could suit that whole property better than just being all R one. I do agree with that, but I'm not in the mindset to say, let's make the whole thing PICA, because it could be something great as a whole. I think it could be something great in parts.
Commissioner King.
I, when you brought that up, I was actually had in my mind that property on Woodward, along the Paint Creek Trail, the one that has come up a number of times.
The Solaronics plant, yes.
And I think it's shown here as zoned as two-family residential.
I would like to make a clarification. It's, that's a future land use designation, not a zoning designation. So that's a recommendation for zoning change.
What is it right now?
I don't have the zoning map pulled up in front of me. I can do that.
Nick maybe knows.
Mr. Banda, would you know that off the top of your head?
I, I can go all in the hall and look. I'm not even sure anywhere. We've talked about so much.
It is currently zoned I one.
Yeah, that's true.
That's what I thought.
The Harrison Building is zoned.
R one.
R one residential.
R one, but it's showing.
It's I one. It's I one, like the yard, like area, that whole area is zoned industrial.
Thank you.
But the Harrison Building is shown on the future land use as public, quasi-public?
That's land use.
That's land use, that's.
Are we recommending a zoning change?
I don't believe we're recommending a zoning change. I think it was, I don't think a PICA is a zoning change.
Correct.
No.
Correct. It's just a designation for a future land use.
But doesn't the future land use, changes on here, don't they recommend, doesn't that equate to recommending a zoning change?
Yes.
But it still has to have an underlying zoning.
So, yes, but so since the Harrison Building on here is recommended to be public, quasi-public, then we're recommended.
At the time, this didn't even exist a potential for them selling the building. This all came up quick, so. It's always been quasi-public. We assumed it would stay a school board building. It could still be a private school building. There, there, we didn't see any reason to change that underlying zoning and underlying future land use at this time. It, it wasn't staff's recommendation that the chairman brought that up to actually ask for that consideration. I think Oakland County, Ron, if I remember right, they had talked about what, what do you think? That's a deep dive discussion that can be handled by, like Mr. Gass said, rezoning the property. If you make that a PICA, you do open the door. You don't have to approve anything in a PICA, but you make it easier. So right now, the future land use is always shown as administrative office, quasi-public, and don't see any reason to change that at this point.
Again, I'm just throwing topics out for conversation while everyone's here. So if there's not any traction for that, we can move on and go on to the next agenda item once we get this resolved. So any other questions from the commissioners based on what was presented either to Vidya, Mr. Banda, the public comment, or any of us? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
So where, where are we then? I mean.
Yeah, I know Commissioner Stone.
I would say that we would bring this back to the March meeting.
Yeah.
With all the updates that City Council would have seen, and then we'll take it to the City Council as soon, we'll rehear it, re-advertise as a public hearing for the council as soon as Land Commission adopts it. It's cleaner that way.
Yeah, and then are we going to add the PICA?
And then will you add the PICA for the Hellrope company?
Absolutely, and is there a desire for a change for the underlying, underlying future land use recommendation as well?
Light industrial? I would be supportive of that.
Yeah, I think so as well.
Yeah, do we, do we need to vote on that, or just, or we can vote when it comes?
I think probably the next time in March, if that's okay, yeah.
Correct.
So PICA light industrial for Hellrope property, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Lord, go ahead.
You know, the other thing to keep in mind is that we don't necessarily have to be tied solely to a future land use map. There's, there's narrative that if we feel the desire to add some narrative for that particular piece of property, to, you know, acknowledge that in the future, if, you know, environmental cleanup capabilities come along that could make that resident, you know, we could acknowledge the limitations that the property has, but somewhat base it in today's reality.
Of course.
For a use.
I agree. All right, so are we good there, sir?
Yeah, absolutely. The changes we'll discuss at this meeting, a previous planning commission meeting, council meeting, and comments from the public will be updated. The master plan to be brought before this body at your next regularly scheduled meeting for approval to send to council for a final adoption.
Okay, so we'll see you in March then?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Feel free to stay and watch the rest of the meeting if you'd like.
So then the first meeting in March, Planning Commission, so then in theory we could have the first council meeting in March for the final approval.
Yep, maybe that, we'd have to take a chance that that's going to happen, because we have to get the public notice out fifteen days ahead. So we would not know what the Plant Commission did. It's, we can do that, but if Plant Commission somehow changed their mind, then we're going to have to, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But we can do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you all.
Okay, moving along, item number six, consideration of a site plan to construct one hundred and sixty-seven new carports at Forest Ridge Apartments located at four twenty-five West Second Street. This matter had been tabled from October fourth, two thousand twenty-one at our regular planning commission meeting. Okay, is there anyone?
Mr. Chairman, just let Vidya make her presentation.
Yeah, that's right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As a refresher, we have reviewed a proposal from Nathan Leader on behalf of Forest Ridge Apartments to construct one hundred and sixty-seven carports at an existing apartment complex. The site is bordered by First Street to the southwest, Second Street to the north, and South Wilcox Street to the west, and is zoned RM one, which is multiple-family residential. As you just summarized, the project last appeared before you at your October fourth meeting in two thousand twenty-one. However, the Planning Commission did have numerous concerns related to the appearance of the carports, the landscape islands in the overparked lots, accessibility to units, and the applicant was asked to make changes or bring back answers to some of the questions the Planning Commission had. The applicant has at this time submitted a revised proposal. Now, the use is permitted by right in the RM one district, and accessory structures such as carports are also principal permitted uses for the district. The plan is proposed to be implemented in three phases. If the Planning Commission would give me just one minute, I'm going to pull up the site plan onto my screen and share it. My computer is very slow, so it's still stuck on the master plan. So I will continue reviewing it, and then I will put the plan up on the screen for you. The plan is proposed to be, the improvements are proposed to be done in three phases, which would be lots two and lot four as part of phase one. Lot three would be part of phase two, and the improvements on lot one will be part of phase three. I am just pulling up the plan. If you would give me one second, it's gone too far. Bear with me, hit, the file jumped all the way till the next project and just skipped over the Forest Ridge Apartments, so I'm scrolling back to it. Just give me one minute. Okay, I have the site plan. I am just going to share this on my screen. Can everybody see my screen? I'm just going to reduce the size of it so that all the lots are visible. So this is the full site. This is lot three, lot, I'm going to reduce it a little bit more, so the whole, oh, maybe I'm too, too small. Okay, this is lot one, lot two, lot three, and this is lot four. So with regard to access and circulation, there are four different parking lots, as you can see, that serve the various buildings. Lots one and two are accessed from West Second Street. Lot three is access of South Wilcox, and lot four is access of First Street. Now, the width of the access drives to lot two, lot three, and the west approach into lot four, which is this one, this one, and this one are non-conforming with respect to the lot width that is required for two-way movement of vehicles. While the approach into lot two is being maintained as is, the applicant is not making any changes to this. It's going to remain at its non-conforming width. The site plan does note that this approach and this approach is going to be removed and replaced. Since the applicant is actually doing work on these approaches, our recommendation would be to consider, if it works out with engineering, to widen these approaches from twenty to twenty-one feet, which is what they currently are, into twenty-four foot wide approaches, which is what the ordinance requires for two-way movement of vehicles. The revised plan does include signage and pavement striping that shows circulation within the site. If you can see, all of these lots are designed for two-way movement of vehicles. These are the two approaches the applicant is potentially redoing. This is a one-way approach and is acceptable, but if the applicant is redoing these approaches, our suggestion would be they be widened by another three to four feet, so that they will conform to the ordinance requirement. The site does have sidewalks along all of its street frontages, and there are sidewalk connections to individual apartment buildings which service the site. With regard to parking, based upon the site having twenty-six two-bedroom and one hundred and forty-one bedroom units, the total number of parking spaces required for the entire site are two hundred and sixty-two spaces. Now, the site plan shows a total of three hundred and twelve spaces, which is a surplus of sixty spaces. Now, the applicant did submit a cover letter that states, I quote, "There is only a small surplus of spaces in each lot." Our concern is if there is already a surplus of spaces in some of these lots, why are new parking spaces being created and new impervious surface being added to lot three and lot four? If you look at all these areas, all these are new parking spaces that are being added. It's unclear why the applicant is expanding the parking lot if you already have a surplus, unless the applicant can show a breakdown of individual parking for each of these lots to show that there is in fact a shortage of parking for these individual buildings because of which new spaces are being added to these lots. As I mentioned in my previous review too, the ordinance does not permit more than twenty parking spaces in an uninterrupted row. When you have more than twenty spaces, you're required to put in landscape islands. There are several spaces in these lots where you have anywhere from twenty-two to forty parking spaces, all in a single area. At the previous meeting, the applicant had stated to the Planning Commission that addition of islands would serve no purpose since the site has a significant wooded area right in the middle here. The site has significant grade and slope changes too, and the applicant said the islands really wouldn't add to anything. The applicant, at the time, the Planning Commission had told the applicant to at least explore the possibility of seeing if islands can be added to any one of these areas which are non-conforming. Now, the site shows a total of seven handicap accessible spaces. For parking, total parking of three hundred and twelve spaces, a total of eight handicap spaces are required by ADA standards. So one additional handicap accessible space needs to be included. Because of the slope of the land, the lot two, which serves this building, does not have any handicap accessible spaces. The applicant had stated, due to the slope of the land here, because of the grade change, it is not feasible to provide a barrier-free parking space that is ADA compliant. Now, we have typically been told that a final decision on ADA-compliant spaces is made by the building official, and we asked the applicant to confirm with the building official whether this is acceptable. The applicant has submitted an email confirmation from the city's building official stating that where the grade does not make it feasible, barrier-free accessible spaces do not need to be provided. Now, the proposed parking spaces in their individual dimensions do meet the ordinance's minimum standards. Now, in several of the lots, the drive aisle width required for two-way circulation of vehicles in most places is twenty-four feet wide. But in lot three, we have aisles that are twenty-seven feet wide. In lot one, you have twenty-six foot wide aisles, and in some cases, they are even wider than that. So in areas, if the applicant is redoing the entire parking lot, where excessive impervious surface is not required, the applicant should try and reduce the width of the aisle to twenty-four feet rather than keep it excessively wide, unless needed for circulation by fire trucks, which I don't think is the case. So if the lots are entirely being redone, an attempt should be made to reduce any impervious surface area or excessive parking area that is being provided. The applicant stated, when I mentioned this at the last meeting, the applicant had stated that the intent of the work is to add carports, not redesign the site. While I do understand the applicant merely wants to improve the site by providing carports, which definitely provide for convenience for the apartment owners or the people who live in the apartments, the proposal the applicant has submitted involves redoing all the lots, removing all the concrete curbs, putting in new concrete curbs. I don't think it is too much of a stretch to ask that if a parking lot can be made a little narrower to make the aisles slightly less wider, but still well within ordinance standards. I don't think it's too much of a stretch or a redesign of the site. With regard to dumpster, the site plan shows dumpsters for each of the individual lots and the fact that all of them are accessible. We have previously expressed concern about the location of the dumpster in this area, which is at the corner of these two streets and clearly visible. Now, the applicant has got a dumpster enclosure shown with landscape, shown with an enclosure around it. Our suggestion was that the applicant add some landscaping in terms of a row of arbor whitey on the west side of the enclosure so that it will not be visible from the street. whitey on the west side of the enclosure so that it will not be visible from the street. Now, the applicant said, due to the grade changes on the site, I've not seen that particular elevation that was previously submitted on here, the applicant, I believe that is the one over here. The applicant previously stated that because of the slope of the site, landscaping around the dumpster enclosure would not serve any purpose. However, we believe addition of some arbor whitey would actually help screen the enclosure. Because of the slope of the land, when you're up on Wilcox Street, you're going to be looking over the enclosure top to the actual dumpster unit. So we continue to maintain our recommendation that some arbor whitey can be installed around the single dumpster that is shown at the corner of lot one in this area. With regard to landscaping, the applicant has submitted a detailed landscape plan, and they have short stretches of ornamental fences with bushes, shrubs. In response to the Planning Commission's concerns and discussion at the last meeting, they have added in a few more trees to make the site look attractive, and this is the rendering that has been provided by the applicant to show how the street frontages are going to look. The applicant did submit line-of-site diagrams also. While the landscape plan includes installation notes, a maintenance agreement must also be included in order to show that the landscaping will be maintained in the long term, and proposed method of irrigation of all landscaping in order to ensure that whatever is being planted survives needs to be included. The ordinance does require a screen wall be provided along the entire East property line that abuts single-family residential. Now, the East property line for the applicant has got a variety of screening. This mostly includes existing stretches of fence, some retaining wall, and an existing wooded area. We believe based upon the existing topography and what is present, the intent of the ordinance has been met with regard to screening. As to lighting, the carports are to be provided with lighting beneath them. Cut-sheet detail has been submitted, and the carport shelter itself will cover the light fixtures. You're never going to see the fixtures, and the fixtures will provide illumination for safety. Existing parking lots one, two, and three are currently illuminated by floodlights. Now, the revised submittal includes shields for the existing fixtures for lots one, two, and three. I'm not sure if there are any floodlights in lot four, and if there are, they need to be provided with shielding too. Even if the light fixtures are located on this side of the building and do not shine onto the public right-of-way, the fact that you are located to residential on the east side and with the slope of the land, any floodlights need to be adequately screened, even for the well-being of the other residents of the other apartment buildings. With regard to architecture, the apartment complex is over 50 years old. Now, the applicant's proposal to add carports is bringing some much-needed improvement and convenience to the residents. The carports are to be constructed of steel support beams with a sloped metal roof. The applicant noted that the roof has a snow load of 25 pounds per square feet. I do not really understand what that means from an engineering standpoint, but the question was raised just to ensure that if there is snow accumulated on the roof, it will be removed, and the applicant has clarified that it will be done. The clearance of the carports is seven feet, and all the residents will be informed that of the clearance limit so that if there is a larger vehicle, it will not be parked under the carports itself. The Planning Commission had some concerns about visually how these steel carports would appear, and the applicant did submit this line-of-site diagram to show a cross-section of the site and also an illustration. This is the top of the carport, and these are the support beams. So the carport is not really going to create an overwhelming presence on the site or effect line of sight from the abutting properties. In your packet, the applicant had also previously provided letters from several of the neighbors on the abutting streets indicating their support for the carports. No new signage is proposed at this time. The applicant did address several of the concerns that were raised at the previous meeting, and there were some concerns that were not addressed, which I believe the applicant would like guidance from the Planning Commission for. It was my understanding that the plan is before you tonight for action. However, Nick has just clarified to me that since so much time has lapsed since this project was first before the Planning Commission in October, another public hearing has to be done in order to ensure that the city is following due process. Our recommendation at this time is that the project can proceed to the next level subject to the following conditions. Widening of the approaches from 20 to, from 20, 21 feet in lot three and lot four to 24 feet to facilitate two-way movement of vehicles if deemed feasible by the city's engineer. Illumination of new parking spaces in lots three and four if they already have a surplus of spaces. Addition of one more handicap accessible space to the site. Incorporation of landscape islands to break up rows of parking with more than 20 parking spaces in a row. Reduction in excessive aisle widths in lots one, three, and four. Enclosure of row of arbor whitey or any other evergreen to screen the dumpster enclosure more effectively at the corner of West Second and Wilcox. Notation of landscape maintenance agreement and method of irrigation. And addition of shields to any existing floodlights within lot four of the development. I would be happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have.
Vidya. Vidya, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So I am Chief Cislik in the room, and we love Vidya, and it's hard to always, especially in this room, to be totally connected. So he's got a few comments that he'd like to make about driveway widths and stuff. And then I just, for the record, I told the chairman, who can't be with us tonight, his only comment on this was he wanted the petitioner to exhaust putting all the carports closer to their building than on the road to get his support. He didn't like them where they proposed them, knowing they landscaped and everything, but, and the chief's going to address that also, but I promised him that I would let you know that was his, his comments. And then Vidya, just stay with the chief here for a second. He's got some comments about the parkway, the parking list, and then the location of the carports, if you don't mind.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vidya, I normally agree with you 999% of the time, except I would prefer not to do anything with the width of the backways, the alleys, if you want to call it those. These buildings pose a very significant hazard for us from a fire protection standpoint. They're not suppressed. We're not asking for them to be suppressed. If you take a look at setbacks from the parking lots and things, having that extra space allows us maybe to get fire trucks a little bit more side by side where we may need those. So respectfully, I'd like for you to, I, I understand your comments, but I'd prefer not to change the aisle widths.
Okay.
But with respect to the, the enclosures, I understand why the, the president of the Planning Commission or the chairperson would like to move them, but they're really in the best spot for us from a fire protection standpoint. If we put them along the buildings, they pose a blockage for us to get access with our aerial device. So with them being located along the perimeters, my preference would be that way. And one other thing, if we could, if we could take a look at the parking lot on the corner of First Street and Wilcox, on the corner there, the bottom corner. My only other concern is, is the parking that's in the middle that's covered. I, I'm a little concerned that we have good turning radiuses. I, I know that those are parking spots, but the cover that covers the car really kind of makes it tight for us to make turns in there. So if we could take a look and verify that we have turning radius for aerial apparatus, if not, then maybe a couple of those extra parking spots that are there, we could maybe eliminate a couple of them on that interior double-row-covered parking to give us better access. I would appreciate any consideration for those concerns.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Okay, at this time, any comments by commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just interject, this is Vidya.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I completely agree with Chief Cislik. My recommendation to narrow the aisles was based on reducing the impervious surface area. However, public health, safety, and consideration is the number-one objective of planning decisions. In this case, the building's not being fire-suppressed was something I did not know. So definitely wider aisle widths to maintain more distance from the building for firefighting capabilities is important. So if you were to go with my recommendation, I would just suggest removing item number five, which is, which discusses aisle widths. Thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, I'd open it up to the commissioners. Any questions or comments? Okay, do we have anyone here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Step on up to the lectern and state your name and address, please.
I'm Nathan Leader, the petitioner.
Okay.
And Kate Suma, the property manager.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, I missed the gentleman's name.
Yeah.
Nathan Leader.
Thank you.
I just, I have a question, I guess. When we received Vidya's response letter, which she just gave a great summary of, we replied to her and asked her to share that. You guys received that? It was dated January 13th and kind of extended.
The only, I don't, I, and that's a great question, because when I was going through the packet, I have your letter dated December 10th.
Right, right.
Which predated the December 30th. I don't have any correspondence subsequent to December 30th, 2021.
Yes. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Vidya, go ahead.
We typically, once an applicant responds to my review letter, I do not create another response because it confuses the Planning Commission. The review comments that we provide will then not match the site plan that is in your packet. So Kate had provided response, and typically, tonight's forum is the place where she would actually go over those comments and address the concerns that are identified in my letter. City of Rochester tries to avoid communications between reviews because then the site plan that's in your packet will not match the comments. It just creates a lot of problems.
Understood. Thank you.
Completely understand that. There was a pretty big delay because we did submit everything for December 10th, hoping to be on the January meeting, of course, which is canceled. So there was communication, Vidya, that I had just hoped would be shared so that maybe we were a little bit further along, but I'm happy to answer every portion that she kind of outlined or covered, or if we just want to narrow in on specific questions that you're concerned about. I know it's a lot, so I don't want to bore anyone reading my letter, but.
Well, I guess I would focus on the recommendation component of her letter dated December 30th and explain to the commission how you intend to address items one through four, and then she eliminated five, and then six through eight.
Yep. Okay, so starting with the widening of the approaches.
Yeah.
Sorry, just gotta get myself in.
That's fine, take your time.
Correct. Yep, so lot one and two were replaced in 2018, and of course, we pulled a permit, and those are compliant. Lot three was recently replaced by the City of Rochester during the road resurfacing with Wilcox. It measures today at 26 feet wide, and that occurred after submission of our site plan, so that's why that might be a little off, but that one should be okay. And then, yes, we do fully intend to widen the approaches to meet the current code specs for lot four on both entrances that are highlighted.
Okay, so let's back up for just a second. It's your position that lot three is 26 feet, you said?
Yes, as of today.
The city just paved Wilcox. They redid the entrance to that parking lot.
They finished that project as we were submitting the site plan, so if the site plan reflects a smaller width, it's because that was being done.
Okay.
And lot four has two entrances, but one is a one-way. The other one will be widened to the 26 feet.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
But then it says to facilitate two-way movement of traffic if deemed so. Is it going to maintain a one-way? So it's not going to be two-way then?
It can't be because we have a barrier between our property and the condominiums next to us, and our building is too close to the exit road. So we can't widen it anymore. We have to get a variance for that, and it'd become too close to the building. So we're going to maintain that as a one-way exit only, as it has been for as long as I know.
Okay.
Order with number two was the elimination of new parking spaces in lots three and lots four. So lot three, yep, at the corner of Wilcox and First Street, we were adding just a few spaces there. Sorry, I don't have the site plan in front of me to tell you the exact number, but you can see they're, they're highlighted on there. And you can also look at lot four at the same time. This all comes down to the placement of the carports and the fact that we're, we're working to supply a space for every resident for the buildings that would use that parking lot. So if we eliminate some of the parking spots we're trying to add, it would eliminate, we'd have a single carport that we'd be trying to install elsewhere, if that makes sense.
I don't think.
Try to accommodate at least one for every apartment and where the apartments are located. That's why certain lots need to have additional space.
So if we eliminate the added parking spot or space, then we then would have to put a single or maybe a double carport structure in some random spot instead of having it in a nice singular row on the back row of those lots. I can narrow down on which lot you got a question about.
Well, so I just want to be clear, because in the planner's letter, it states the site plan notes a provision, there's a 312 parking spaces. Do you agree with that number?
Yeah.
Okay. Which would mean a surplus of 60 spaces. Do you agree with that number?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got 60 spots, and then according to the plan, you want to add five more in lot three and then 11 more in lot four. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
If you've narrowed down into those lots, because you know, we talked about this last time, if you remember, these lots services just the buildings within that lot. So lot three is an example, we have seven plus spaces, we want to add five. Code requires us to have 68, so that's a surplus of six spaces.
Okay.
Only because that lot serves four hallways or 50 units?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Yeah. So, but I think the biggest point, I understand the concern about surplus. Why are we adding spaces when we have potential surplus in the lot? But it all comes down to the fact that we're trying to supply carports, one for every apartment, and not scattered all over with all these crazy structures all over, but a nice, clean, singular row, they're contained in one area.
And you can't have people from, from the building on First Street in lot four walking around and up the ridge to another parking lot area because that's where the carport structure is.
Yeah.
We're trying to make it sensible and, and convenient to where their apartments are located.
I'm appreciative of the chief's comments about the carports not being in the front rows. There's a lot of reasons for that, but even internally, we had some reasons for that. I've managed apartments for 20 years. I've had carports that have the back of them on the south, and when the sun in the winter is not rising as high, it cannot melt the snow and ice that drip off the front. And so we were really careful to select spots that we knew in the wintertime would get the most sun exposure to prevent ice. So we really, and then, of course, we're thinking about our dumpsters and our snow removal, where will we put piles? So from a property management view, we have so many reasons we're putting the carports where they are, and I, I understand a lot of concerns, and we'll probably bring it up later, related to, you know, how they're on the outside and maybe not as nice-looking. But yeah, that's another motivation to where they are.
Well, you say not as nice-looking, but they're not what's at, right?
I think they're good-looking carports.
The one, the great oaks are, not the kind of great oaks, or the kind that were approved over the, what's the other building?
Cedar.
Cedar.
Cedar, yeah.
Right, yeah.
So that was number two, unless there's.
No.
Any.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So the fire chief had recommended in that middle area, maybe reducing the ends. Is that something that's feasible?
So that's actually where we're adding spaces to the center carport area so that we could keep all the carports out and keep the front row clear so they had accessibility for the fire trucks, ambulance, our dumpster that needs to get to the front.
That middle, that middle portion?
Yep. So we actually, we had the engineer do like a drive path little thing through there. I think it's marked on one of the plans, to make sure that all the turns were wide enough. And then we also want to widen, you know, the, keep the aisles as wide as we can, basically. But yeah, that's, that's a concern, not just the fire trucks, but our dumpster guy. He goes through there and wants to go the easiest path and will not be backing up and changing gears.
You don't need to remove the end, like the two on the north end and the two on the south end. Lots, like that.
You're talking about the double structure in the middle section, correct?
Yeah.
We had to add in order to accommodate the number of carports that we.
Mr. Chairman, could somebody turn off your mic if you're not talking, because roughly papers, people listening on TV can't hear anything. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We can't turn off.
Commissioner Clark Martin, if you look at drawing C3 in your packet, you'll see the four lots identified, and on lot three, you'll see the addition of four new parking spaces.
Right.
In that center column. in that center column.
I was just commenting on what the
Correct.
fire chief had said.
Right.
Is that a not turning radius?
As long as they, the chief's saying, as long as they can prove, it would be the same for the garbage trucks, probably. Just nobody's identified they're correct. If they are correct, not a problem. If they're not, it's a problem. So I get the whole all-in-one rule, but we have to make sure we have the proper ratios for fire, just show them on the plans before next week, and if they work, they work. Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The geometric on sheet C3 are for automobiles, not for fire apparatus?
Correct. Right.
So I would say based on how tight they're indicated, there's some adjustments potentially needed.
Mr. Fire Chief, do you have the dimensions, the radius that you would need for emergency vehicles?
So in the NFPA standards, in the appendix for fire vehicles, there's a standard measurement. I don't have that with me. I'd be happy to go ahead and provide it to the applicant.
Right. That would be helpful, please.
Yeah, because potentially you won't be able to add those.
Based upon a cursory review, the carports that are located at this end will be in the path of a fire truck turn. The, this turn radius is just way too narrow, especially since it's a metal-supported roof. The applicant should show a fire truck's turn radius, but I'm sure chief will notice when you submit it that this turn is going to be almost impossible to make without hitting this.
Thank you.
I'm gonna make a comment. I'm gonna throw this out here. I don't know if it's something we could do, but those two spaces on the north end of that parking structure, we could possibly eliminate and maybe move them in front of the other building just north of that in the parking lot side. Again, we don't really want to put them up next to the building because that
We could accept that.
Because that would be the purpose of being able to get closer.
That would work.
Yeah.
That would work.
Yeah, that was kind of our Plan B in that section.
Okay.
That would at least widen that area right there. And you don't really need to remove any on the south end because if a fire truck's coming down to get to that building at the other end,
I'm not worried about the south.
Not the east side of that lot, it could just drive down, straight down, and it's right there in front of the building. It doesn't need to turn any.
Agreed. Agreed.
Yes, he agreed.
So we would move two and move them over to the front of the building 122. Just north of where it is. And put them all the way up in the corner so that they're not hindering getting close to that building, too.
Okay.
That will work.
Okay.
Number three was the addition of one more handicap accessible space. And the building official confirmation of accessible space cannot be provided within Lot 2. So I just want to share, I had a good conversation with Randy McClure. Him and I had discussed this way back in August about the quantity of handicap spaces because we kind of inherited way less than that when we took over the property. And he had agreed that the slope in Lot 2 was pretty extreme. And it was my understanding that he was okay with seven, but that was a misunderstanding on my part. So we did get the eighth space added, which you're not seeing on the plans. It's up near the office. It's on the other side of the ramp where one handicap space is already, so we don't have to add any more ramping there. He also shared in an email the question that came up in the last meeting about whether we would need to have accessible parking in our covered spaces. And I'll just read it really quick because he put a nice summary, but he said, "It is my opinion that it is not needed for the following reasons. The required amount of spaces are being provided in other areas. Two, the buildings themselves are not accessible, therefore only visitors would need an accessible spot. Three, the carports are only for the tenants, one space per apartment. Accessible spaces are provided for visitors. And four, accessible spaces are required to be close to the point of entry and the accessible route. The carports are the furthest spaces away from the building." So we added the eighth space. Happy to show you where, but I know we already got to update our site plan. And then he also made the comment about not requiring the handicap space in the carports themselves. So that, I think, covers three. Questions?
No.
You want to start that one? So four is the incorporation of landscape islands to break up the roads. I know this was a hot topic before.
Yeah, we really went to town with our landscape architect to make sure that, because the comment was made, I don't think it was the last meeting, but the meeting before, you see a sea of steel on these parking lots. And I don't know if it's, if it's any better, you see a sea of black asphalt or you see a sea of steel. But either way, we took the request of the council wanting us to really soften the look of the property and the landscape from the roads. And we enhanced the landscaping, which is on our landscaping plans. We have layers of different types of shielding that will hide or camouflage somewhat the carports. We also drove down First Street coming from the west, coming towards our property, and you can't even see our property until you're right there at the corner of Wilcox and First. So you wouldn't even be able to see because there's trees in the cemetery block our property. But we still added a boatload of trees, both on First Street and on Wilcox at that corner in Lot 3, and the same thing on Second Street as you drive up Second Street towards Wilcox. Different layers of landscaping, fencing, large trees, small landscapings that grow and get big. That's on the landscape plan.
Yeah. Obviously, I think the biggest thing with the islands is you have carports on the outer spaces, so if we add islands, really, they would be on the most interior section of all the lots. So they really would be hidden by the carports, and I think it's more beneficial for us to do a little bit more work around the perimeter.
They really serve no purpose in our application. I totally understand it in a retail orientation because I have a shopping, I have shopping centers, and you want to have a breakup of all the asphalt in a shopping center application with a landscape island and lighting and things like that. But in this application, it serves no purpose whatsoever to stop the carports, put landscaping there that doesn't have water, doesn't have irrigation, and then start more carports. They're just hidden by the carports. So we feel, we feel it really is not appropriate.
Let me, if I may, ask a question. As part of your proposal, you're going to do this in phases, correct?
Yes.
And is the work going to be mill out, remove and replace the existing parking lot?
We're removing the asphalt, and where we're putting carports, we're putting concrete back in.
Okay, so...
And then the rest of it's going to be asphalt.
Right, but the question I have is, what is there today, in one form or another, is going to be completely removed and replaced, whether it's with new asphalt or concrete where the carports are going to be, right?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Okay. All right. Continue, please.
Is it possible, I just wanted to add on about the islands a little bit. Is it possible just to pull up our renderings on the screen?
I thought you were going to have something different about the landscaping, and I had said to Kate, I think we should start to add our, we're doing this in phases. One and two is the first year, three and four is the second year. But I think I'd like to put all the landscaping in first. Even before I get to the third parking lot, I want to put the landscaping in so it has time to mature and grow by the time I get to the third lot.
Sure. But here's my concern, and I don't know if this is the right time or not, but you've got an existing non-conforming parking lot with more than 20 spots in a row and there's no islands.
Yep.
Your plan is to remove exactly what is there and then rebuild it so it's also non-conforming. And that's the struggle that I have is because you have a non-conforming, you're going to rip it out and then put it back together the same way and put it back in a non-conforming use. And that's the struggle I'm having candidly is how do I get around this idea where the ordinance says if you've got more, you can't have more than 20 spots, or 20 spots, you know, continuous, and then if you do, or you have got to have islands in there as well, and your plan doesn't have either of those things. So that's what I'm trying to...
I understand.
Yeah.
We looked at that and thought we won't be able to accomplish our goal of one covered space for every unit.
Right.
If we have to have islands.
Yeah, we're limited on space. I mean, that's, and if we had more shared parking lots, I guess it would make more sense, too, you know, because people would have more parking ability. But it is limited in terms of the quantity, its services. But I was going to just point out some of the landscaping highlights, but...
I'll get you in just one sec. Commissioner King, you got a question?
So if I'm looking at this correctly, the areas that would be replaced are only where the bays are or the carports. So there is, in Lot 2, there's one that's 22, and in Lot 4, there's one that's 26. Everything else falls underneath the 20 or at 20? So it's really only those two that are even in question? Is that correct?
No, no. It's, if you look at drawing number C3, you'll see the Yeah, the gray area, it'll say remove and replace is existing asphalt pavement. So the whole parking lot...
Are we talking areas that don't have carports, too?
Yes.
Would give another 63 extra spaces. Is there an issue with the areas? Because I was looking at the carports, I see only two areas in question of carports where there's more than 20?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
The issue with regard to the landscape island is, I do understand the applicant's desire to want one covered carport for each unit, but that is not an ordinance requirement. The fact that the applicant is ripping the entire parking lot out, you cannot replace a non-conforming situation with a non-conforming situation. If the, if the incorporation of the landscape islands would actually make them lose required parking, there is a justification. But in this case, this complex has got 60 surplus spaces for the applicant's own notes. They might have to sacrifice one odd apartment having its own covered carport if that's what it takes, but the ordinance requirement is for landscape islands, not for covered carports. I completely understand and appreciate where the applicant is coming from, but when we review a site for compliance, we have to do it based on the ordinance standard. So if you are removing everything and you have a parking surplus, there is simply no justification for not putting in the landscape islands. And as Commissioner King was saying, there aren't too many places. We are talking maybe three or four islands at best to break up the 20 parking row. There are a couple of places where it's 22 or 40 spaces. So it's not an impossible task. Yes, it might not accomplish the applicant's goal of giving every apartment its own covered carport, but that's not an ordinance requirement.
Thank you.
I'm ending up with a surplus because I'm adding spaces for the covered carports. That's why I'm ending up with a surplus, and that surplus is really more of the convenience right up to the buildings for visitors and for safety.
Right, but...
That's why I'm ending up with a surplus.
Right, but I think the issue is that you have a non-conforming use, okay? You are going to remove and replace all of the blacktop that's there. And you are going to restore it. You're going to build another parking lot that is still going to be non-conforming.
Can I ask for a variance on that?
I don't know if that's before us right now. I don't know if that's what you do. You'd have to go somewhere, I don't know, Mr. Man, does that mean Nick? Is that somewhere?
Nick would be.
Yeah.
That's another question for this body. That's the point I was going to make. What you're asking...
I can tell you, by taking this zoning board, they're going to waive it. They have acres of, I get this, but he's right. I agree with Nathan on this one. This is really set up for office buildings. They have acres of parking, and I'm sorry, of trees that they have to take care of. I don't, I think you got, I wouldn't get hung up on these islands. I think they're not technically expanding the parking lot in the area they're replacing. If he milled it, he's not replacing it, so he's not taking away the non-conformity. He's just replacing it by milling it. So I, we're getting hung up on details here that. We appreciate everything they're doing, and I don't want to get hung up on a couple of islands. That's, if it goes to the zoning board, I'm going to recommend waiving them, I'll tell you right now. They probably won't get there in time for that, but that's just my comment. This is, they're doing a lot of stuff here with, I agree with what Kate said. Take the landscaping, put it on the periphery where the people can see it from the public. You can't, you don't go into that lot ever and see the internal islands. You see the periphery, and they have, spend their money on the periphery, not on the internal, is my opinion.
I'm just going off the drawings that say remove and replace. It doesn't say mill. So that's all, Mr. Man. I'm just going over what was provided, but go ahead, Mr. Gassen.
I need to restate, this matter is not a planning commission issue. It's a re, it's a zoning board of appeals. We cannot approve lack of islands. If I'm wrong, please tell me, Nick or Vidya, we cannot provide a variance through the planning commission.
I don't think that they're doing enough to lose the non-conformity. It's still the exact same parking lot. We're not reducing the aisles or anything now. So I don't see that you are taking away the non-conformity by replacing the existing parking lot. I can understand you're saying you're expanding a couple of spaces here, but that's making it more non-conforming, not conformant, right? You guys, yeah. We could go to the zoning board if that's what you want.
Mr. Gassen, go ahead, please.
Sorry, Nick, if I might offer some insight. I see the point you're making, but that is exactly why we have a zoning board of appeals. If on this site there is a practical difficulty in complying with the ordinance, the right way to go about it is to go before the zoning board of appeals, not for the planning commission to waive the islands. And this, in fact, does not meet the test of non-conformity. They are literally reconstructing the entire parking lot. The non-conformity ordinance clearly says if you remove anything more than 50%, it now has to conform to the ordinance requirements.
Parking lots or buildings, I've never heard it.
Any non-conforming use or structure. That's how it works.
We're agreeing to disagree. That's okay.
And I just want to add two...
Yeah, I'm just going by the interpretation of the ordinance, but I can totally see the point that Kate and you are also making. It's, it's just a situation that the planning commission makes a deviation without the justification that is typically the purview of BZA. It's slippery slope.
Thank you, Vidya. Commissioner Gassen, please.
In totality, this is not a replacement. We're considering carports to a magnitude that's big and the parking lot as a whole. I agree with what Vidya's saying. I will stand tight on some kind of formal position on it, but I do not believe it's a planning commission matter if we're, we can't vary from an ordinance requirement knowingly.
People gladly take it to the zoning board of appeals, no problem. End of story. Just move on from that. Locate the ZBA. That's just a month process, no problem.
Commissioner King.
I just could make one comment. Since there's, just addressing the carport phase where there's more than 20 spaces, there's only two that would be non-conforming. So if in Lot 4 and Lot 2, one of those in the middle was to be eliminated, could they be added to Lot 3 where the other two were going to be added? And then you could address the islands and the inner spaces because there's 63 extra spots. And then you could avoid going to the, just one option, avoid going to the zoning board of appeals.
I kind of had a similar line of thought, maybe. I was just thinking, could we just install carports and not replace our lots? I mean, we're trying to put two stones out here, you know, or two projects out.
We're trying to do it the right way.
Right.
You don't want to, you don't want to put carports up and then later go underneath them and try and fix your asphalt.
Right.
So, I mean, I guess I could, but I'm trying to do this the right way.
But to answer your comment, I think you had said splitting up like the 26 runs carport in Lot 4 and adding it to the new carport we talked about in Lot 3. The reason we can't is each parking lot services just the buildings within that lot. They're not connected by sidewalk. There's a huge 50-foot hill wooded area. It just wouldn't be feasible to swap in other lots. It's very, very carefully placed in order to accommodate one for every apartment. You know, we wanted to stay away from renting them and really truly have the convenience of every apartment having one.
Nearby.
Yeah. But, yeah, what I mean...
All right, why don't, we've addressed anything, number five with the aisles, that's the chief.
Correct.
And then why don't you go on to number six, if you don't mind?
Number six was really brief. I know Vidya's brought this up a few times, and we just commented that, you know, we have a really heavy deer population that happens to pass right by this dumpster to get into the cemetery. They don't always like to jump the fence like you might think. They like to go in when the gates open, and that's a direct path. And our bividi are just not a great fit because of that.
Well, we propose we would extend that dumpster two feet up higher so you wouldn't see the dumpster. see the dumpster. Apparently, no one liked that. They want arborvitae. I planted arborvitae at fifteen entrances at these units years ago. They're all gone.
Yeah.
They're all gone because the deer ate them all. So if you want me to put arborvitae there, be happy to put the arborvitae there, but I don't want to be held to have to do it every two years, as opposed to me just extending that enclosure up two feet, you won't see the dumpster.
Right.
Yep.
My apologies, Mr. Leader. I know you had mentioned deer last time. I simply forgot. It's now bringing back memories of deer eating up all your plantations, so.
All the arborvitae?
Yes, the planning commission can modify. I did not remember that you did mention the deer. It's just not something I come across normally, so. The planning commission can, if for screening reasons, I think maybe just under the foot would also accomplish what the ordinance requires. They can modify the arborvitae requirement in that case.
The next one was the notation of landscape maintenance agreement and method of irrigation. This was on Site Plan C-3. We do have a longstanding, they've been with us since we took over the property in 2008, lawn maintenance. Nick's familiar with all the trees we planted and how we've maintained all of those, so maintaining our new landscaping is not gonna be a problem. I can answer any questions if you have. And then the last one was the shielding of lights.
We've shielded all our lights because we know the city put an ordinance in after we went to the last meeting. There was a mention of some of the lights that are on the north side of our building off of First Street.
Lot Four.
Lot Four. They all shine into the woods, so I don't think that they are, they affect our other buildings whatsoever. And there's no lights, there's no floodlights on the south side of that building shining into First Street. All we have are lights underneath the entry overheads that just light right there at the entrance in the sidewalk.
Okay. Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah, that was in break. Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant?
I have a few, and maybe I should have offered them during each of those topics, but I'm just gonna, starting from a couple of comments that we re-hatched already. Landscaping, I wanted to say first that I think what you proposed in this new plan as a response to some of our comments along Third Street to help kind of break up the view of the carports was well done.
Thank you.
I think if we could expand that a little bit more, and there was a little discussion about that regarding the dumpster, I think it was at Ursin and Wilcox. I think there's a couple other places, and I'll just tell you what I'm thinking. You could consider that as you prepare your recent middle. It's really at that area first in Wilcox. You have a couple trees in the corner and then some S-shaped landscape beds. And I think if you do one more towards the east, that would be beneficial.
Are you talking about the camouflage, that dumpster enclosure?
That, but also it's like a, it's a deflection from the view over that to the carports, really is what I was thinking about. So concerned about the dumpster, but I think it's a nice way to take care of two things. Similarly, on Second, along, yeah, Second Street and Wilcox, more going north-south along Wilcox, where the dumpster enclosure is kind of what you do on Second Street where you have a zig and dash, front row and back row.
Can I interrupt, please? Because we installed pear trees all around the entire perimeter on First, Wilcox, and Second, and we have a row of pear trees that go right up Wilcox, right in front of those buildings. And there's also other large mature trees that are growing there that had been there. We had to strategically place them so that they wouldn't die out because of the other trees above them, so.
I did notice that on a different plan. I'm looking at your L2, which does not show existing foliage, so it was a little bit difficult to do that, what you're saying, consider what's existing, because I don't know what's existing.
Yeah.
I did a drive-by, and I kind of found in another plan some indications of landscape, but I wasn't sure. So as I'm looking at your L1, I'm suggesting there may be something there to help, and that was really, not so much the dumpster, but more view to the carport.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on your first one and that one. We took our landscape architect and we came up with these plans out to the property, walked the entire thing, and it gets very narrow there, so we're very limited on what we can grow, and it's really steep as you get closer to that dumpster that Vid brought up that we want to just raise rather than plant. We already have a row of our pear trees, and like you mentioned, there's some trees, if you can't see them there, that are already kind of encroaching that space. And then we had a great conversation with Nick and Chief, the police chief, about really trying to maintain some gaps and some openings and some safety. So your comment earlier about the corner, maybe beefing that up more, that was kind of done purposely. We want to put as much of a barrier there with also allowing some peak in and some safety in there.
Are you talking at the second in Wilcox?
That is First in Wilcox. But the same thing, same concern is at Second. Second Street landscaping, I wanted to point out this earlier, I don't mean to jump ahead of you, but we were really conscious there of doing a two-layer effect of landscaping. So there's a lower, higher effect. We're planning two more sycamores to kind of line up with sycamores that already exist, a larger, higher wall of landscape. And then we're doing something that's closer to the pedestrian sidewalk where it's more annuals or perennials.
Grasses.
Yep, some grasses for some height for, so people walking will have a barrier from seeing all of the heavy metal, and people also, when they're higher in their car, will have that second layer. So Second Street, we spent, we're spending a lot more money. We spent a lot more time.
Well, we spent a lot more time to really try to think and take your concerns into our heads. You know, we were out there, we walked across the street to where the neighbors' houses are, looked over there, said what we had to do, the landscape guy put this all together so we could accomplish that.
But it sounds like you made a real concerted effort to-
Thank you.
-listen to what we were saying. I'm just, there's always a differing of opinion.
Sure.
I like that two-tier approach you did on Second Street without really having a sense of what's existing. I think there's more that can be done. Again, it's a deflection of the view. It's a distraction, not to see the carport, but to see something first. And I think those two locations along Wilcox and First should be considered. Also throughout this, but I think maybe there's a little reason not to, is the entry into off of Second Street, right your main entry, I don't know what building that is, the North Molskner or the West Molskner? That might be a safety driving issue, but again, the guard, some of the view coming up or down Second Street to see the carports, those aren't as important as the first two.
It's interesting, though. We've talked to almost every one of the residential homeowners across the street on Second Street, and they really, we showed them the carports, we showed them the landscaping plans, and none of them really had any objection whatsoever. And you would think you'd get, you'd think you'd get more of an objection from them than anyone just driving by.
No, it makes sense to me. Just again, a couple, I'll continue quickly. Okay. Again, for your consideration for your recent middle, lighting was mentioned by the planner. She used the words, and I don't, I'm not putting words in your mouth because you said never see lighting, Vidya. I don't know if that's exactly what you meant, and that's what I would be expecting, you would never see the source of lighting. It'll be illuminated, but you'd never see the source of lighting.
Correct.
You're talking about underneath the carport.
Underneath the carport, yeah. And I know that you're gonna have lighting on your campus, but no new lighting, visible fixtures, point of source.
It's downward lighting up the ceiling of the-
Yeah, and then they're down enough that they're probably guarded from the face of those carports. But I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Again, for your consideration, the size of the paving or lot coverage was mentioned. I would definitely agree with what the fire chief talked about, wider aisles for public safety, but the geometric returning for fire apparatus has to be tested. I'm just kind of stating that again. Wider approaches, you acknowledge that some have been done, that you're gonna do the others. Why are you looking for that?
There's only one left to do.
Yeah, I remember, number four.
Lot Four, the double entry.
The big thing for me is the response on barrier pre-parking. You said tonight it's eight instead of seven, so there's a correction in that regard. I think the establishment of what is eight is, I don't agree with that. I looked at this, I mentioned this last time without getting into a lot of detail. It's a campus, so it's a master site approach on multiple parking lots. It's not looked at as a three hundred and twelve parking lot facility. It's looked at four individual lots, and when you do that, each lot has to have its own facilities for barrier pre-parking. That's not me telling you it's a good idea, although it is a good idea. That's the U.S. Board of Access saying the ADA requirements are that. And there might be a difference in your opinion, but opinions really don't matter in that regard. It's what is required. And I'm saying to you that you should consider that, and I guess have further conversations. Kate mentioned there was some correspondence from the city. I don't know if that's a part of the, it is part of the meeting record, but it needs to be looked at in more thoughtful detail, in my opinion. That's just an opinion, but the law will matter. The carports themselves, and this was a big thing for me, I know what you're trying to do is one for a resident, but the carport benefit to someone that's slow to get out of a car, that has trouble getting in or out of a car, seems like where you should be focused in some service of those barrier free spots, whether it's eight or more. And not to do that, I think, is a shortcoming, and I don't think it's meeting the requirement. In fact, I'll say it, I totally think it's not meeting the requirement based on accessibility. We're not gonna get into a lot of detail, but I'm gonna just tell you, I shared a link on this with the city to look at a little further, and I'm not gonna go into all the detail. I'm gonna put my hand on it, but through the ADA, Department of Justice, Department of Transportation, accessible parking space are required at each parking facility on a site. So your site has four parking facilities generally, but really it has more like nine because a parking carport is a facility within an open parking lot. I don't know where we split the hairs on that, but I'm saying in concept that the carports need to have barrier pre-parking in them. And I'll kind of leave it at that. There's more to it.
I have a question.
Look at the U.S. Accessibility ADA Standards for Parking.
I understand what you're saying, but wouldn't it make more sense to have that handicap spot up closer to the building with a ramp on the sidewalk that leads to the building than across the parking lot under a carport?
I agree. Totally agree. And I would have been a proponent of putting the carports against the building. You have to weigh the balance of public safety against that. They're out away from the building, and if that was the reasoning, fantastic. But that doesn't mean a barrier free parking spot shouldn't be covered.
Thank you.
I think there's some conversation that you can have with the city to further get to a point of balance, but like the island thing, it's a requirement, so a variance might be the way to get the island thing eliminated. I don't know how you'd get this requirement eliminated.
Commissioner Lord, any questions for you?
No, I think, I think we've covered any concerns for me.
Commissioner Clark-Barton?
I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner King, any further questions on your part?
No.
No? Commissioner Stone, how about you?
No, I think Mr. Gassen covered a lot. He was very thorough.
Mr. Mayor, okay. And I don't have anything further. Okay. Anything further from the-
I don't think so.
Okay.
Anything more?
No.
Vidya, anything further on your part?
No, Mr. Chairman.
So I guess from a procedural standpoint, Vidya or Nick, is this-
We would ask to have a public hearing set at your next available meeting, which would be the March meeting, if they can get, and we'll continue to work with the petitioner on Mr. Gassen's comments and some other things, but we should be able to get that done and wrapped up to have a public hearing next month.
Commissioner Gassen.
I'd make a motion that the petitioner make corrections, work with the city to revise according to comments tonight, and then we set a public hearing at the first possible meeting.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Okay. We have support. Okay, the roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Hauser.
Yes.
Mayor Bixson.
Yes.
Commissioners, Clark-Barton?
Yes.
Gassen?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
I'm sorry, is your mic on, Lord?
Sorry, got it. Yes.
Okay. Stone?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, moving on. My understanding is the Preserves has withdrawn their request for consideration, so moving on to six, C, consideration of lighting ordinance, section two-three-zero-six.
That would be Mr. Crack. When we put the title, there he is. Thank you.
Good evening. I will proceed if the chair is ready.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. As Planning Commission recalls, it just finished up working on the lighting ordinance, section twenty-three oh-six of the zoning code. Planning Commission submitted a proposed ordinance to City Council that went through all the necessary public hearings, and in January, those, that ordinance amendment was adopted. As part of that adoption process, City Council had asked questions regarding the exclusion of residential lighting from the regulations that were before it, and we communicated that at the time that Planning Commission was looking at it, they didn't want to add any additional regulations to residential to residential lighting. Planning, or City Council decided that it did want to address based on some complaints, some issues with the residential lighting coming from residential homes. So rather than simply giving it to Planning Commission to say, figure something out, City Council decided to vet the issue out and consider some possible regulations to give to Planning Commission to consider. After reviewing it on a couple of occasions, City Council agreed to move what has before you now is a ordinance amendment to section twenty-three zero-six. It's not overly extensive, but it does add some lighting that affects single-family residential lighting in residential districts. Specifically, it adds section, a new subsection four, and quite simply, the major regulation is that exterior lights that exceed a hundred watts or the LED equivalent, and spotlights and floodlights on single-family residential properties would be required to be directed away from and shielded from other residential lots. That's in the subsection four A, and then four B is a very similar, you should recognize that language. That's the sunset provision that City Council and Planning Commission put into place on the other lighting ordinance. So that's if it's a certain requirement, and this is a passage of six months or one of the other triggers. One thing that City Council discussed after talking to administration and myself is, you know, what type of enforcement would the, did City Council want to have? Because there are, there would likely be, you know, there, you can only imagine how many residential lights there are in the city of Rochester, and it would be an administrative nightmare to try to go out and determine every single light whether it's compliant. So City Council was very much in favor of having the, this ordinance be regulated on a complaint basis and not a city code enforcement initiated, and that's reflected in subsection four C. And four D is then just a, I guess a catch-all to say that this is not to the exclusion of any other ordinance amendments, or excuse me, ordinances that would, may be applicable, but in addition to. So there were other possible changes to consider, such as reduction of the foot candle from one foot candle at the property line to something less than that. And in the end, it was determined that this is the one that City Council wanted Planning Commission to consider. So if City, if Planning Commission is, wants to discuss this, that is the intended request, and the next step would be, since this is an ordinance amendment, to move forward would be to move it for a public hearing, which would be at a date, the next available Planning Commission meeting for that purpose. So if there's any questions or you want to take action, I'm here, and I know that administration is as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Are there any questions for Mr. Crack before we start on our end? Commissioner King?
I guess is one, what's the typical wattage of a floodlight? And is one hundred enough where a floodlight of a hundred that's not shielded would not be problematic?
That's a good question. So there's actually three different types of lights. There'd be spotlights, floodlights, and then other exterior lights that exceed a hundred watts. So the idea from City Council and supported by administration, I believe, is that, you know, the typical bulb, like a carriage light in someone's house, would not exceed a hundred watts. That's a, that's a pretty standard. That's a, that's a pretty standard wattage for typical residential lights. So it wasn't, they didn't want to necessarily create a whole bunch of non-conforming lights. So that was the kind of the, the number. And then, so then spotlights and floodlights, you know, they'll, think of those as the motions or the, the lights above this, more the spot or directed lights. So those would automatically be having to be directed away from or shielded from residential lots. And again, this would be on a complaint basis initiated, and I'm, I'm happy to report that they're talking to the fire chief, and there are very few, maybe a couple light complaints a year, so we don't expect this to, to trigger a great number of, of issues. But that, that seemed to be the, the wattage of lights that, that seemed reasonable.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Fr-
This is Christian Hauser. I've got a couple of questions here for you, and you had touched on one of them, is when I look at your memo on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, the second paragraph starting with during the adoption process, and it states in large part due to a resident expressing her frustration, I see that as a singular complaint. And you mentioned earlier that there might be two per annum, and it would be my understanding that implementation of this ordinance would affect, I would say, nearly every house in the city. Is that generally correct?
Well, I would say that the, I, I would say that the general lights not exceeding, would not exceed a hundred watts per. I would say that the, the foot candles would probably not be in violation. I would say maybe the, the spotlight and floodlight being directed away from other residential houses, that's where I think you're probably would see the non-conformities.
Okay. So my concern is, is just from a holistic view, we've got one complaint, a substantial number of houses that are going to be impacted, and then, when we were here last time, we spent a substantial amount of time specifically excluding residential structure, the residential to residential, and now it seems to be kind of shoehorned back in, and the, 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 I, I guess I want to say that the metric, it's not a foot candle anymore, it's now a wattage. And so there's an inconsistency, I think, between you've got foot candle as it pertains to multifamily commercial to residence, and then residence, you've got a wattage issue. And I think, to me, that creates a lot of room for interpretation, and candidly, I believe it, it kind of moves the goalpost a little bit where we're trying to find some type of violation instead of a singular standard that ought to be the metric for all of the light in the city of Rochester. Am I wrong on that?
A, a little bit.
Okay.
And the only, and the little bit that you're referring to is, is the one foot candle limitation is still in place for residential.
Right.
So there is no, so that is consistent among every exterior light. So, so that's the part that, I'm sorry, is that?
Was that Nick?
So the, the one foot candle, that is consistent. It's the addition, so I guess to your, to your accurate point is, the addition would be additional types of lights that would require, that aren't prohibited, but would require shielding or directed away. So, yes, when I, when I, in my memo, I say to a resident, singular, that is, there is a, certainly a, a singular vocal, but there have been a couple others. And quite frankly, as, as Planning Commission knows, there was complaints, I guess another complaint from a resident that, about apartments, multiple family, that have already been resolved.
Right.
So we don't, we certainly wouldn't expect those to, to continue, but I would say it is, to your point, it's a very small contingent that, that has expressed concerns of the current ordinance that City Council considered, and, and City Council, in fact, I, I won't speak for the mayor, I know he's there, but, you know, it was, I guess, a significant enough concern that, that City Council wanted Planning Commission to, I, I guess reconsider or to consider these, these new provisions.
And, and I, and I appreciate the multifamily to residential issues, and I think those have been addressed, and I think we started, you know, last summer, last fall it was, where they went out to these facilities, talked to management, and those have been all addressed. My concern candidly is now you're, you've got a situation where it's neighbor versus neighbor, and it takes away the dialogue of saying, hey, listen, your light is in front of me, can we dim this, or can we do that? And now you've, you've, we've made an ordinance on it, on wattage, which is, you know, very subjective in a sense, that how much is this wattage here? I don't know. Any bulb is different, and I think that we, we run the risk of impacting, as an unintended consequence, a lot of houses in this community, and I just personally don't see how this solves a singular problem that we may have in the city. And that's just me talking, but I certainly would encourage other members of the council to, or the commission to, to private their input. I just remember very expressly discussing, we wanted resident to resident excluded when we did this ordinance, and I, and I'm not persuaded that it ought to be bootstrapped back in. But again, I'm one person, and I certainly want to hear what everyone else has to say on this. Yes, Commissioner Stone?
For, for A, exterior lights that exceed one hundred watts or LED equivalent, are we talking about one light bulb, or are we talking about a fixture that can have multiple lights within? Can all of the lights add up to not more than a hundred watts, or can each bulb be one hundred watts?
Right. So if you've got like a multi-light fixture, three candles, or three bulbs, sixty watts each, is that a hundred and eighty?
Right.
Right.
And then who is the police, like you said, to walk around and take out my light bulb and tell me I have too much?
Well, if I understand it correctly, it would be your neighbor or anyone else in the city who would come up to you and say, you have a non-conforming light, I'm going to call the police, and then they come and talk to you about it.
Right. Anyone have an answer for four A?
I don't have an answer. Mr. Crack, do you have an answer for that?
The multiple bulbs in a single fixture was not something that was discussed, so that if we need clarification on that, I, I would suggest that the, the type of lights that were, were anticipated were the single bulb nature. So I would suggest that it's probably the, like, bulb itself. So I, I guess I'm trying to picture, other than a, a two-headed spotlight, you know, the motion sensor light that would have multiple bulbs.
Well.
But, but, but we could certainly add in exterior light bulbs, certainly.
Commissioner Gasson?
Maybe the simple language would be no single bulb exceeding a hundred watts. So you could have multiple bulbs that eighty or sixty.
Right.
That would be more than good.
Well, that was my-
I'm sorry, I had a hard time picking up the street ass.
You gotta turn your microphone on.
The other point I was going to make was, I think something that was said here brought to my mind is, maybe you said your neighbor would be the one, the police. So if that were a criteria in this, is that it has to be someone directly next to you to be the complaint.
Right.
Not someone roaming the city, kind of picking things.
Weaponizing the ordinance.
Right. Maybe that's an addition to this, just to be very specific, the offense needs to be to your neighbor, something like that.
A nuisance.
Complain to your neighbor.
Right. But don't we already have a nuisance on the, on the books? Isn't there an ordinance that deals with that already?
There is.
Right. So now we're bringing-
I, I would, I would suggest, if I could respond to, to that idea, because we did consider that, whether it's a, and it's not necessarily a, a neighbor having to approach the other neighbor, which is actually what we would hope, is that if there's a concern, that neighbors would talk to neighbors first before involving the city. But this, but, you know, there is a, a situation or complaint, complaint of bulb that if it was an adjacent, if there was a, a condition that it'd be an adjacent residence, then that wouldn't address the light bulb that's being complained of.
Mr. Crack, if I could ask a question, the incident, the, the complaint that the city is dealing with, the city went out to the offending property, I'll call it offending property, but the, the property that has the source of light, and it was measured, and the light emitted from that was less than one foot candle, correct?
Correct.
All right. So it passed under that one foot candle. So now City Council's saying, well, that's not good enough. Now we want wattage to be an issue, and we want wattage to be the determining benchmark, forget about foot candle. And I just see this, 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 this tightening of the screw and the higher standard being implemented in order to address a singular complaint. And, and, and that is, to me, what I don't think the ordinance, or frankly, any ordinance ought to be drafted for. If there's an issue, it's not resolved by the ordinance, then that's what it is. But I don't think it's good policy to start drafting ordinances to deal with a singular issue time and time, and then when it's not what you want, well, let's put wattage in, or let's move the goalpost while the game's being played. I'm just, candidly, I just can't get behind that. And I think that's what's happened here. Yes, Commissioner Clark Martin?
My question is too, is, is the, the motion detector ones, they're, they're for safety.
Right.
And oftentimes, you know, if something like that goes off, a neighbor, it can be a hellful situation.
That's right.
So does this apply, the same thing applies to the motion detect, the, the motion censored lights, which for safety reasons, I, I think is an important aspect.
My reading of the ordinance would say, yes, it would apply. Mr. Crack?
I, I, I would agree with that, and it doesn't prohibit those lights, it just says if they, if you do have those lights, that they would need to be either directed away from that other house or shielded. They're not prohibited. They're, this is not a prohibiting ordinance, it's just, you know, completely, so it's, it would require a redirecting or a shielding component.
Commissioner King, do you have any questions?
I feel like we've talked about this a lot.
Okay.
I, I just, I don't know. What if you have over a hundred watt, but it's on a dimmer, and somebody looks at your bulb, and then they're arguing about it, but you always keep it dim? There's just so many scenarios. The, the multiple bulbs, i- if you have three together, I mean, that's going to be more offensive than just one, so is this really the right, right way to capture it? I, I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so I'll just give kind of the City Council view of it, I guess, is, so, you know, we did the thing with the apartments to the houses, and, you know, we were all happy because we talked about it, and they, they fixed it.
Right.
Okay, well, that's nice, but then there's, you know, what if they don't fix it? So then it's the same issue in, you know, you know, house to house, or, you know, residential to residential. So it's like, you know, I think the thought was, this is just giving, where, you know, the, the council wasn't looking for the police and fire department to be out cruising the streets, you know, raiding people up. This is just another tool to help out the fire chief if there's an issue. And yes, there's one, you know, one complaint, complainant, if the, I don't know if that's the right word, that, you know, that, you know, we, we hear about, but, I mean, it could happen to anybody, and especially in the older part of the city where the houses are on top of each other, that's an issue. So, I mean, we kind of had to, you know, if it's resident, residential to apartments, well, it seemed like there should be something residential to residential. We always say, let's go work it out with your neighbor. Well, maybe you can't. You know, I had an issue with my next door neighbor, who's a great neighbor, and it was a sound issue. I asked that person to, you know, remedy that, and she was happy to do that, and I thanked her for it. But what if she had said no? You know, you got to have some, something. So I think that's where that came from. So I, I think the council felt like there needed to be something residential to residential. This was a first step towards it. I don't think you're ever going to have it perfect, but I think that was kind of the, the sense of the council. So Attorney Crack, do you, do you agree with that interpretation?
I think that's fair, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, I think that's, and as they say, I, and I'm cognizant of it because my neighbors, I've always had great neighbors, all the years I lived there, I'm thankful for that, but it's really close. And if you had a bad neighbor and you can't work it out, well, you need, you need the fire department or the police to have some tools, I guess, to help you out if you got there.
But isn't this really in response to the changing of the housing styles and sizes in the older part of downtown? And you have people building up to the extreme allowed lot limits-
I mean, I think that's-
Of, of big footprint homes on tiny lots.
Sure. But for example, my, and again, I'm just using my example, I have a small house, I don't, so I have small houses on either side. So that's not the, you know, that would not be the issue with me. But yeah, of course, that, you know-
But that's, to me, that's what this ordinance is a, a direct response to. We, we've allowed all these homes to be built-
I think you actually find these lights on older homes, not on the newer ones.
Well, I, I think you could probably find a few people who'd argue that the big houses have more windows and more lights inside of the room.
And they're up high and they shoot down.
Yes, and it leaks out into the neighboring homes. I mean, the other part of me sits here and thinks, okay, do, do I complain about my neighbor who keeps a Christmas wreath up all year round? Okay? All year. Doesn't turn it on half the year, but it's up, right? And I sit there, I go, okay, it's not Christmas, like, when is the standard bring it down type season? Is that April?
July second, yes.
Right.
Halfway there, yes.
But should I complain to, to some board or city council and write an ordinance about it? I, I just, it's an extreme.
Right, but, and I agree, and I agree with you, but then what, what, if you have something nasty, how do you deal with that?
So this doesn't fall under the nuisance thing?
I think-
I, I think, but candidly, I believe, and I'll defer to City Attorney, but as a lawyer myself, I would believe that that would be, if you had an issue with that, you would have a claim under that, or the nuisance statute that's already on the books. But again, I will defer to Attorney Crack, he's much more versed in municipal law than I am.
So that, that is a tool that's available. For this particular situation, it was not deemed to be a public nuisance. There, there's a difference between a, a public nuisance and a private nuisance, and it was determined that this would not fall under the category, this particular situation wouldn't fall under the category of, of a nuisance situation, but there could certainly be a situation that would.
Commissioner King, did you have a question? Yes, please.
I, I did have a question. What is, so let's say somebody files a complaint, and it may or may not even be a neighbor, it could be somebody just driving around and enjoying this, but what is the, the remedy? So it's, you know, six months from the date of this, so if it's six months later, you get a notification, if you don't take action with us in certain time, is there a fine? Like, what, what actually happens?
I believe it's a misdemeanor. Is that correct, Jeffrey?
Yeah, eventually it would get to that, well, actually, that, yeah, it eventually would get to that point or could. So this would be treated much like any other blight situation. The fire department is, is very resident friendly when it comes to these situations where it, they, they're definitely compliance-based. There is, I've never seen a situation where something went right to a ticket, but it would be a, there'd be a notice sent to that, that resident that, that there was a, a code violation and asking for a period of time to remedy that situation, and then if that didn't occur, then a second notice would go out to that same property. And then, but meanwhile, there's also in-between type discussions that tried to occur to try to get compliance, because what we don't want to do is, is to run to court every time that there's a, a complaint filed with the city. So there is, there is a, a process by which, before a, a ticket that would have to be addressed at the district court, would be, would be handled. Now, I, I can tell you that there has been, years and years and years ago, there was a light complaint that got to the point with a ticket, and it was, ended up being resolved, short of any monies having to be paid. It was, you know, let's, let's figure out how to resolve the issue, and there was a resolution, and there was no monies paid, but the problem was resolved, but it, it happened at that point. So the city's not interested in the- but it, it happened at that point. So, um, the city's not interested in the $10 that it would get from a court ticket, it's interested in, in resolving issues before it, so it's very compliance-based.
I have, uh, two questions, one for Mr. Banda, and one for either the fire chief or the police chief. Um, I guess I'll start with, um, Mr. Banda. Nick, would you have any idea approximately, if this ordinance was to go into effect, how many houses or residences in the city of Rochester would be impacted by this ordinance?
Yeah, I, I'm looking at fire chief, thousands.
Thousands, okay. And Mr. Fire Chief, in the past 12 months, this is a two-part question, how many complaints have you received about resident to resident lighting issues?
I think he said one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One.
One?
I think the zoom, Brian, that the zoom might have, we've had one.
You've had one? Okay, thank you. So I've got one complaint in the past 12 months, and the adverse impact, thousands of houses, so, okay, I don't have anything further. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
So I mean, I, I, you know, I agree with what you guys are saying. At the same time, I guess I'm sympathetic to situations of neighbors on top of neighbors who can't get along. That's one thing I've learned in all my years in the city council, is we all talk about, just go talk to your neighbor, well, a lot of times it doesn't work. So you gotta have something, this was our a- attempt at it. But, but again, I, I understand, you know, I understand what you're saying, so I think that was where the...
So does Royal Oak or another community that is older, that has had similar housing stock turnover and, and construction of newer homes, and, you know, have a similar ordinance?
I can tell you, so I looked, Birmingham has no residential exclusions, Rochester Hills has no exclusion resident to resident. So when we will look at neighboring communities, and this was provided for us in the packet that we received a few months ago, that Rochester Hills doesn't have an ordinance about resident to resident light issues, nor does Birmingham, and I only pulled those two because they were part of the packet, so we would be in the anomaly.
But maybe we just need to revise a nuisance one.
And that's fine.
Good idea.
Yeah, my, my, my two cents, I tend to agree, uh, with Mr. Hauser here, I think this feels, although I can appreciate where it's coming from, I think this is a little bit of a solution looking for a problem here, so, uh, and, and I think once you put something in writing, then we've got to focus, we've really got to focus on the words, because now you're, you're creating some finality to right and wrong here, and if it's not written well, then it could wreak havoc, I think. I mean, just as a, for example, the, the, the first item on 4A says that, uh, floodlights, or, uh, spotlights, floodlights on single-family residential properties must be directed away from other residential lots. I'm not quite sure how you, how do you direct, I mean, if you're, if, if I have a light on a home, it's gonna be directed to somebody else's home one way or another, you know, so I, I think you're opening yourself up a little bit once we start putting words to this.
And maybe it needs reflectors, or...
Whatever, but we're gonna, we're gonna go down a rabbit hole of, you know, making sure all the words are right for a problem that I just don't think exists, so.
So, so that being said, Mr. Banda, with respect to next steps, I'm looking at the memo from Mr. Crack, it says, planning commission consider an ordinance amendment, if it proceeds with this version, set the matter for a public hearing, if the planning commission is not ready for this step, requested actions discussed and provide administration with direction regarding any requested changes. So I, I don't know, I mean, do we take a straw poll, or do we, how does this work? I mean, from my perspective, I would not be in favor of this amendment, and I would certainly just leave the lighting ordinance as it is, that we did a couple months ago and sent it up to city council, dealing strictly with multifamily commercial to residential, and no resident to resident lighting.
I mean, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but you could take a poll right now amongst yourselves, and if you don't have enough to move it on, I understand that, but I don't think there's any harm in setting it for a public hearing. Let Jeff work with some of the comments today, take it, and let's let the public know this is out there, and then make a decision at that point. I, I think we should see the process through, and then, then we could recommend the city council, or you could recommend the city council one way or another, if you don't like it, at least you have done their wishes to follow through and evaluate it, and then have reasons for either approving it or denying it, and pass that on to the city council, who ultimately makes the decision on ordinances anyway. Jeff, unless you disagree?
I, I, I don't at all. Uh, there's, you know, planning commission could decide not to take any action, um, or, you know, and then that would essentially kill it for this, for the time being, or it could proceed with the, the public hearing like, uh, like Mr. Banda said, and then, you know, take the, the, any public comment that's out there, and maybe that will change your mind, or maybe not, and, and then at that point, there's a lot of stops that could happen if, if planning commission isn't, uh, in a position to move this forward for any recommended changes. So, um, you could stop now, it could stop after a public hearing, or it could continue. So, um, I, I think Mr. Banda's suggestion is, is a good one.
So why don't we, Mr. Mayor?
Well, well, to me, it's pretty clear, this planning commission doesn't want it, so to me, why, why have a public hearing and just say they don't want it, and city council will, you know, but, but again, that's...
Right.
I, I mean, that, that's why it was sent here, for, for, I was about to say you guys, for us to ma- make that determination, and, uh, I mean, it's very clear, so...
Do you want to make the motion then, just to not do anything? I mean, I don't know how it would be a negative in a sense, but, you know, to not take it...
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Um, so if the, if the idea was to not take any further action at this point, the, I, I wouldn't necessarily make a motion to not do anything, so a, a, a negative motion, but what I would just, is there a motion? Just ask if there's a motion to be had on this, this ordinance, if there's no motion to move it to the next step, then it just simply dies.
Okay, so I'll ask, is there a motion to, uh, take it to the next step? Okay, no motion being made, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
That was clear?
Yep. You got your answer, Mayor, yeah, so, I'll let you report back to your colleagues. Okay, um...
I'll blame, I'll blame all you guys.
All right, um, home stretch here, you guys. Uh, line item number seven, miscellaneous. Mr. Banda?
Um, I don't have anything, I believe we're gonna see a Pfizer plan, um, in March. Uh, we buy their, they downsized a little bit, and we don't have the authority to correct that, so they'll probably come in March on the preserves, they, they're having a little problem with their neighbor to the south in Rochester. Um, I would guess they might come back, that he did a full review, it's their internal problem with their neighbor. So if they can get that straightened out, I'm gonna meet with this little circle later in the week, we might bring that, that forward, uh, but I don't see anything other than that at this point. There's some rumblings of a couple other developments might come in, if they do, I'll let you know.
Okay.
And great job tonight, uh, Mr. Hauser, Commissioner Hauser, good job everybody, I would like, thank you for your, yeah, thank you for your patience. You know, with Sienna gone, with Laura and I, and the front office, we're trying our best to get stuff out there. Mayor, I know we messed up your package somehow, we apologize for that, but we'll get, we'll get it right here going down the line, and I think she's got one comment.
Thank you.
As a chairperson, I'd really, really like to go ahead and just pass on, um, how much appreciative the fire and police have been with the owners of the apartments on First Street and Second. They've spent an enormous amount of money, uh, updating and cleaning up the facility, which has really made a great difference on the total number of calls we run there and everything, but, so I just wanted to make that comment, so co- the planning commission knew that, uh, it's appreciated all the hard work that's been done there.
Thank you. Um, line item number eight, public comment. Um, is there anyone on hold or online who would like to make a public comment to the planning commission?
Mr. Turnbull, is he there?
Mr. Gasson?
I wanted to state something miscellaneous, I didn't know we were jumping...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, okay. Okay, I don't think there's anyone in public comment. Okay, I'm sorry, returning back to reverting number seven, miscellaneous, go ahead, Mr. Gasson.
It's not pertinent really, but I just wanted to make a comment of my thought here tonight. Uh, over the years, I've, I've seen a lot of really great ideas from the commissioners, and smart thoughts, as well as from our administration and our practitioners too. And tonight, we talked a little bit about the PICA, the, what used to be special projects, where we have some flexibility in zoning district requirements, but I also saw us kind of wander into the idea that it might be okay to say, well, we don't need islands for that apartment development. And I, I just want to be very careful that we don't casually feel like we can wander off of ordinance. It might, it sounds like no harm, no foul, why wouldn't we do it? It doesn't seem like it would have been a big deal, except that we would have crossed the line as commissioners to potentially go against our ordinance, and I, sometimes that feels simple. And I, and I, I don't think we were going there, but it kind of sounded like there was some potential, and I wanted to caution us that, that we can't do that.
A- a- and, and, and I take that very seriously. I think all of us are charged with the responsibility of just calling balls and strikes, you know, we don't make the ordinances, we don't make the rules, we're here to just say, hey, this is what the ordinance says, and I'm the messenger. And if you don't like it, there's a remedy that you can go and appeal, or seek a variance, but we're charged with enforcing that in the sense of applying it to people who come before us, so I agree with you.
Yeah, and I'll just add it, or finalize it, I feel a little bit out of place saying that. I don't know, I, sometimes I feel like a bad guy, bringing up things that are, well, yeah, why, why not be okay with that? In some cases, um, it feels right to go that direction, but I don't think we have that purview in, on this board. I think we've got to stick to the...
As the person that, that's probably directed at, I understand what you're saying, high-straight interpretations, there might be room to interpret that ordinance. If you did not touch that lot, then you would not have, you're not changing the non-ord, that's the question, I question. I would 100% agree, no staff person, nobody will recommend going against the ordinance, but to how you interpret the ordinance and the circumstances that lead you to that determination, are you changing a non-ord? That's where I was going, so I want to make that very clear, and I, I love Mr. Gasson, we, we get at this all the time, and I, I respect that, but I can also have the right to make sure we're interpreting it right, no difference than you and the billing official. He's made a comment, you disagree, we'll have to get to the bottom line there, it's, there's always opinions, I think, but we will do the right thing, always, of course.
Just for the record, I, I wasn't pointing only at you, Nick, just for the record, okay? I was talking to us, and how easy it is as a board to feel okay with something.
But I will, I will tell you that never once have I ever felt that my opinion didn't value as much as anyone else's, and I hope that anyone in this room feels, anything that is on your mind, please say it, because that's why you're here, you're an active participant, and your mindset and your views are appreciated, and not to be discouraged, so, so I'm all for it, so thank you, Mr. Gasson.
And, and Mr. Gasson, I'm, I'm used to being the bad guy down here.
Right, yes, exactly, yes. Um, so I just want to confirm, Mr. Banda, there is no one on the public comment waiting to be...
That is correct, correct.
Okay, and then you've talked about number nine, the upcoming agenda, the Pfizer, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any final comments from the commissioners?
Thank you everybody for coming.
Okay, thank you, and, um, that is it, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Like a veteran man.